We're meeting at 3:00, Highway 2, San Fernando, 3rd floor. First item of business will be the Pledge of Legions. Everyone would stand. Please.
Yeah.
Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Next item of business will be the roll call. Start this one.
Commissioner Stoltz.
Commissioner Layton. Mr. Songstad.
Commissioner Frankenbach.
Commissioner Wenscott.
Trynance.
So we are missing...
It's just done.
It's done, I guess. All right, so we have a quorum. We'll move on to announcements. The announcements, Mr. DeValle?
No, not at this time.
Okay. Move to the consent calendar, Consent Agenda, which is the approval of the minutes of October 3rd, 2023. Any objections or corrections?
For some reason, I was not able to. I tried to phone those up earlier today. I was not able to find the... Oh, there it is. Wasn't there?
Find it?
I think so. Not the actual meeting minutes.
I think that's... We can move beyond that.
Yeah, we don't have... I don't have the minutes.
Okay.
That's all right.
And we need to have these posted, so I don't think the minutes got posted. So we can deal with it later. All right, the next item, we could either go to the Idaho Manufacturers Housing Association presentation, or we could do the election of the Chair and Vice Chair, whatever you want us to do.
I would vote for doing this first.
Okay. All right, we have some... We have guests here, Idaho Manufacturing Housing Association, to give us a presentation.
Okay.
It's all yours.
All right. My name's Terry Ottenz. A little bit of my background. I've been in city and county government for about 40 years, not the last 20, but the 20 before that. And then I went to work for the Association of Idaho Cities. I worked under a joint city-county program. This was back in the early 2000s where I did comprehensive plans. So I consulted with cities and counties on comprehensive plans. I know I did Bonner's Ferry way back then, and several others up here in the northern part of the state. Then I went to work for some nonprofit associations that have public purposes, of which one of them is the Idaho Manufactured Housing Association. I'm now retired from there, but I am continuing to work with them doing these zoning presentations because that's my background. So I want this presentation to be super informal, so questions, just interrupt me, raise your hand, and we can talk about that. We did invite some cities and guests. I know we have somebody... We have people from the Panhandle Health District, and then we have Mandy back there from the city of Kootenay. Kootenai. Kootnee. Yeah. I'm from southern Idaho, so... Okay. So we're not just trailer parks anymore. This is a guide to trying to meet some of your affordable housing needs. I've been working with Jacob. He did give me a copy of your ordinances so that I can... I'll talk a little bit about what you've got in your county ordinances right now. The agenda is we're going to talk a little bit about affordability. I'm going to go through the state laws and definitions, the development options. I'm going to talk about not in my backyard, because that's a big thing when you start talking about manufactured homes. People have that old image of, you know, the 10-sided, flat-roofed mobile home, and they think that's what you're talking about when you talk about a manufactured home. And then we'll talk about meeting your housing needs. This presentation can be as short or as long as you want it to be. I'm planning on about a half hour, and then if you have questions or anything, it might be just a little bit longer. So affordability, manufactured... There is a difference between mobile homes and manufactured homes, and I'm going to talk about that a little bit. Manufactured homes, which are anything that was built after 1976, were built to a brand-new standard. Mobile homes did not technically have a standard. So manufactured homes had got involved, Housing and Urban Development, got involved and developed construction standards for manufactured homes. And the manufactured homes that you see today not only look like single-family homes in many instances, but they use most of the materials that a single-family home construction uses. So there's... But the issue is, is because they're built on a... In a factory, on a construction line, they're built, and the materials can be ordered and bolted. They're built much faster and at a less expensive cost than if you were building a stick-built home. This is a table of manufactured homes, and this is as of two months ago. You can see the table talks about the square footage of the home, and it talks about what the value of the home is. So the first column that you see that starts with $97,000, that's for an 11,040-square-foot home. That's the cost of just the manufactured home. If you are placing a manufactured home on a permanent foundation, on a lot, then you have to add the cost of the permanent foundation, concrete foundation, so the price goes up to about $130. A site-built home, the national average is $275 a square foot. For the same square footage, would run around $300,000 nowadays. I also did another figuration at 200 square feet, because in Idaho, it ranges, but that's about the average. But it's still... You're still looking at $228,000 compared to a $130,000 home for the same square footage. So there's an affordability factor here. I want to point out that manufactured housing is the only unsubsidized form of affordable housing in the United States right now. When I say unsubsidized, I mean the federal government and most local governments do not get involved in the construction of manufactured homes. They are less affordable... They are more affordable because of the way they're constructed, not because they got some housing subsidy that helps folks get into that home. However, a manufactured home on a permanent foundation is considered the same as a stick-built home and is eligible for such programs as the Idaho Housing and Finance Association for first-time home buyers, that type of thing. Depreciation. So one of the... Let's all be honest. You look at a mobile home, and you say, "A mobile home depreciates. A stick-built home appreciates." But with a manufactured home, that is not the case anymore. And I have several studies. If you're interested in getting them, I could send to you. But we used an example here, and this home was located in Caldwell. It was built... It was placed on the property in 1994 with a foundation at a cost of $80,000. In 2001, it sold for $125,000. It was listed in 2016 at $195,000. And in 2023, Zillow now shows it estimated at $490,000. So the value of that home has gone up consistently with the same value that stick-built homes have gone up. And we're seeing that all over the country, and we're seeing... I have several studies that I can send to you if you'd like to see them. So we're not looking anymore at if we place this manufactured home on a piece of property, it's going to be valued less and less over the years, which means we're going to get less and less taxes off of it, and it's going to deteriorate. And taxes is the next issue. It's kind of a myth, too, because the feeling is with manufactured homes, you're going to have a lesser tax base if you encourage manufactured homes than you do stick-built homes. My discussion with numerous assessors in Idaho indicates that is not true. A manufactured home is based on the same conditions that any other home is assessed at, and that's mainly the age of the home, construction materials, and the condition of the property. And so if a manufactured home is maintained the same as a stick-built home, you won't see the property taxes going down. They also... I have two studies, and I think one of them is in the appendix of the handout I gave you that talks about the myth that if you put a manufactured home next to a stick-built home, then the value of the stick-built home is going to be, or a site-built home, is going to be less. And that is not true either. And I, like I said, I interviewed several assessors. That's not true nationally, and I don't think you're going to find it true in Idaho. So the conclusion is, is that the taxes that a manufactured home pays is going to pay for the services that it receives. Well, that's, of course, if your residential tax base is actually paying for the services that they receive. You know, it depends on what your tax base is. The other thing to note is, one of the things I'm going to talk about is manufactured home communities, or you guys might call them parks. That's an excellent tax base, because not only is each home in the community taxed as personal property tax, which is on the same tax rate as property tax, but the operation itself is a commercial operation, and most counties will also tax that at commercial tax rates. So you kind of get a double whammy there, because you've got the commercial operation, and then you've got the individual homes that are all paying personal property tax, because they're all owned... Most of them will be owned, not by the property owner, but by the person who's leasing the land to place their manufactured home on. So definitions. So there's a confusion out there, probably not with this county, but with several counties, and that's covenants. So covenants are... Is a private agreement between the private property owners. It is not... The county is not a party to those covenants and never should be involved in enforcing covenants that are on subdivisions. That is up to the private property owners to enforce. So I have heard many planners tell me, or building departments tell me, "Oh, well, we can't issue that building permit because the covenants don't allow manufactured homes." That is not the county's or the city's concern at all. In fact, the state law says you have to issue that building permit, because you cannot discriminate between housing types. So I'd like to put this in the definitions so that I can explain that if someone comes up to you and said, "Why'd you issue that building permit?" Or, you know, I think you guys call them building location permits. "Why'd you issue that building location permit? It's not allowed in our subdivision." That's up to them, and the people who brought the manufactured home in, it's not up to the county. Manufactured home, as I explained, is anything that was built after June 15th, 1976, and those are to HUD standards, which have increased. The construction standards have increased over the years. And in fact, HUD now requires all manufactured homes to meet the 2021 energy codes. It doesn't matter if the state requires that, which the state does not. State requires the 2018 energy codes, so that the occupants of the house actually have a little bit better energy advantage when it comes to paying their heating bill and that type of thing. Also, energy codes have been known to increase the sustainability of the dwelling, so it will... The higher the energy code, the more sustainability or the life of the dwelling, depending, of course, on who lives there and how they maintain it. Manufactured housing community. The state law defines that as a site with 10 or more manufactured homes on it. So that's... And I did not... I didn't see a definition in your code for... I think you call them manufactured home parks, and we're going to talk about that. So by... I mean, mobile home parks. So by calling them mobile home parks in your zoning ordinance, technically, I think you're saying only mobile homes will be allowed in those parks. And I know that's not how you interpret it, but when you get around to updating your development ordinance, you probably want to update the vernacular as well, because I doubt... I know you have mobile homes out there, but you're probably not seeing a whole bunch of them being moved into the county. So yet, they're probably all manufactured homes, especially in the communities, the manufactured home communities. A mobile home was built prior to June 15th, 1976, and I noticed in your ordinance, you have the same requirements that the state has, that that home has to be rehabilitated so that it's a livable dwelling. And that rehabilitation in your own ordinance basically talks about fire alarms, smoke detectors, egress windows, the wiring being checked so that it's safe for the mobile home. We had a question at the county presentation about, well, what do you do when you just show up on a piece of property, which every county has? My sister was the Oahu County Assessor, and she'd say... She would call me up and say, "I just drove by this property, and all of a sudden, there's this mobile home sitting there, and, you know, how did it get there?" And it's difficult. It's difficult when you see them being moved in in the middle of the night. But technically, they really do need your building location permits. You should be enforcing that, and they should have, of course, the septic and well permits that might be required, and you really should check them for rehabilitation. The biggest issue that I have, having worked for the cities and the counties, is liability. Yeah?
So is the definition that I'm perceiving here between a mobile home and a manufactured home is the date of June 1976?
It is.
Are there no longer mobile homes being constructed, or what would you perceive as a mobile home?
Correct.
With the tin roof and tin side?
Well...
What are they called?
You will find manufactured homes that do have the tin roof and the tin sides, but you won't find the old... You're not going to find a mobile home that's constructed to standards that don't meet HUD standards.
So is it problematic to encode to define one as a mobile home and one as a manufactured home?
You should be defining them as a mobile home and a manufactured home. That way, not only your planning staff, but your assessor, whoever, knows what the difference is when the permit comes in. Modular home. A lot of times, manufactured homes get confused with modular homes. What a modular home is, is it's actually a stick-built home. It just got built off-site, and it's being moved in, as you can see from this picture here. So they build it in sections, they move it in, they put it together, but it's actually built to the Idaho or International Residential Code. And I don't believe you require codes up here, but modular homes are required to meet those codes, and they're moved in on-site. So they are different than a manufactured home. Okay, so park model recreational vehicle. A park model is a recreational vehicle. Now, the thing with a park model is it looks like a manufactured home. So, and you can see that. It looks just like a manufactured home. It's just smaller, but it is not built to HUD standards. So this is where the county might want to relook at some of the things that they're doing. A recreational vehicle, which would include recreational vehicles, park models, are built to a national standard, the RBIA, the Recreational Vehicle Institute of America, standard. And they're required to be built to that standard at the national level. However, that the standard is not meant for 365/24 occupation. And they're very clear about that at the national level and at the state level, that these vehicles are meant for seasonal use only. So, and I understand that you all do allow them for year-round occupation. Here's the thing. The state does not define seasonal, so it's up to the county to define what seasonal is. And so maybe you're defining it as 365s, but seasonal. But the reason that RBIA defines these as seasonal and not for full-time use is because technically, they're not constructed to last, like a HUD home or a home built to the IRC standard. And the issue that the county might want to address, of course, is the liability. What RBIA... I talked to them. The reason they say seasonal is because they don't want to get sued if someone dies in a... Living in a recreational vehicle year-round. And so whether that's a county issue or not, that's up to your county attorney to determine. But here's the other side of that. Something has to be done about affordable housing. It's a national crisis. There are not enough places to live, especially for people who don't have a lot of money. So what does the county do? Do you look the other way? Do you allow it? Do you... Folks living in recreational vehicles or park models? And what if you say, "No, we better not allow that"? What do you do with all of the people who I know are living in recreational vehicles? So, and you'd have to grandfather those that you've already allowed it anyway. So it's probably a transitory problem. It's one that if you can solve your general housing problem, you're not going to see people voluntarily living in recreational vehicles. So you've got issues that you have to address, probably, before you have to address the whole issue of the seasonal use of a recreational vehicle. Tiny homes? That's the new thing. Those are also considered recreational vehicles unless they are built on a permanent foundation and then... And built to the IRC standard. And if they are built to that standard, and I don't know in your county with it, because you don't require the IRC standard, they can be lived in full-time, even though they're quite small. One of the things I like to tell people is, especially if somebody wants to bring in a park model to live in, if you... A park model is quite expensive, $60,000, $70,000. A manufactured home dealers do construct manufactured homes that are 340 to 700 square feet in size. If someone wants to bring in a park model, honestly, they could get a manufactured home for the same cost, and there would be no issues with safety. So it's just something to think about. Okay, state laws. So Idaho's state law, and this has been in the law for 30 years, prohibits discrimination against manufactured homes. So what it says is that you cannot... If someone comes in for a building location permit, you can't say, "Well, that's in a site-built neighborhood, and nobody in there wants a manufactured home, so we're not going to give the issue a permit." You are required to issue that permit. You cannot discriminate by housing type. What you can discriminate against is whether or not that manufactured home is single-sectional or multi-sectional. So the state law says that you can put some standards on the placement of manufactured homes in single-family neighborhoods, and that is that they can be multi-sectional, at least two sections, that their appearance should look like the surrounding... The materials that are on the surrounding neighborhood, that they have a pitched roof. And in your case, you've got snow issues, so you've got to address that anyway. So you have the authority to put whatever restrictions you want on that. So what I've seen statewide for the last 30 years is no single whites. So, yeah, you can move in your double-wide and put it on a permanent foundation, but we don't want single whites in neighborhoods, and we're starting to see that change. What we're starting to see is because the single-white construction is starting to look like... And there's some pictures in the back, if you want to look at them. It's starting to look like it fits in a... It's a stick-built neighborhood that many cities are starting to allow them. And the city of Boise is the... Cities and counties. The city of Boise is the one that has just changed their whole zoning ordinance, saying that a single-white manufactured home will be allowed on a residential lot in Boise. And before, they required that you had to get a special use permit. That's how most people handle the single whites, except for in agricultural areas, of course. And then, single whites are almost allowed everywhere throughout the state. So the 676509 is state law, talks about the siding of manufactured homes. The 696509B talks about you can't zone manufactured home parks out of your county. You can't say they're not allowed. You have to treat them and manufactured home subdivisions the same as you would treat any other commercial use. You can zone them. You can allow for them in certain zonings, but you can't say they're not allowed at all. And I don't know why you would, because honestly, the manufactured home community has become quite popular, and it has become a huge investment opportunity. We're starting to see that in Idaho, where folks are not only looking to buy existing manufactured home communities, but they're looking to develop manufactured home communities. And so what you have is, and what you could encourage in this county, is you could encourage developers to look at that type of housing. It's on a smaller piece of property. There's a lot more housing. It's a lot less expensive, and you may have... You may be able to find a developer who's willing to come in and develop that for you to meet some of your housing needs. Valley County just had a developer come to them, wanted to build a... I believe it was like a 200-home manufactured home community to meet their workforce and affordable housing needs. They turned it down because of NIMBY. It was right next to a neighborhood of really expensive homes, and they all said, "We don't want it." But what they missed out on is the opportunity to provide 200 affordable homes for their workforce in Valley County, most of which cannot afford to live in McCall. The state law allows you to set standards, as I've said. The state law also sets installation standards. So there is a manual. It's on the state website. This is what you have to use, and you all don't have a building department, but the state... Anyone bringing in a manufactured home is required to get an inspection by the state. If the manufactured home is brand-new, though, and it's being installed, it doesn't... It's not installed by this... These standards. It's installed by the manufactured specs, and... But still, they have to get a permit from the state. We already talked about the new manufactured home. Oh, these are tax... These are tax things. 5520 is really important. That's the Manufactured Home Residency Act. So if you have concerns, particularly about how a community is going to be run, and that is the big concern. So the concern that we face is that somebody owns the property, and then you put your home on it, and you're leasing that spot that your home is sitting on. What happens if they want to sell the property for a higher tax use? What happens to all those homes? We are working with the state right now to look at some ways that, for instance, the residents might get the rate of first refusal in purchasing the property underneath them, but also on ways... And we've talked to the state about setting up a fund that could possibly help pay for the moving of those manufactured homes. But you're not seeing that. What you're seeing... You might see a couple of old mobile home communities close, but your manufactured home communities, those are being bought up, and they're being improved, and new manufactured homes are being moved in. And this trend has already started in the city areas, Boise and the Treasure Valley and the Magic Valley, and I think you're going to be seeing it up here, where folks are going to be interested in actually investing in a manufactured home community. Manufactured homes constituting real property. You all know that law better than I do, but basically, if it's on a permanent foundation and the DMV says it's a real property, then... Or the Department ITD, then it can be taxed as such. So there's many development options under the state law. These are... I'm losing my time here. These are... We've already talked about how you can't do permits. Okay, so one of your development options, as we've been talking about, is communities, and they can come in different forms. They can come as lots sold to each individual homeowner, where homeowners association would hire a management company. The land in the community can be owned by one entity, and they lease out the lots, but that entity is responsible for maintaining the manufactured home. It can be resident-owned and operated by a resident board. And then finally, it can be resident-operated with the land owned by a nonprofit. And we do have a nonprofit here in Idaho called Leap Rock, who is available throughout the state to talk about the development of manufactured home communities, where that residents actually, when they buy their lot, they buy into the ownership of the community. Development agreements. So I know you guys are all familiar with this, being on the planning commission. Development agreement is in a case of a rezone. You all can have a development agreement and set out all the standards that you want to set out for that manufactured home community or that manufactured home subdivision. And that can include maintenance requirements. It can include design requirements within the manufactured home community, such as a community... such as a community clubhouse or a pool, which you probably don't have a lot of pools up here, do you? I don't know what you do with them eight months out of the year, but, you know, those types of amenities. And the underlying, if they've asked for a rezone to do this manufactured home park, if they, they're not willing to follow through on the development agreement, you can pull the rezone. So it goes back to the original zoning. And they're required to actually bring the property back to the original zoning. Special use or conditional use, I think you use that already and that would be that if someone wants to bring in a single wide or manufactured home park or something like that, you can use a special use and/or a conditional use. The good thing about that, as you all know, is that requires usually a public hearing and public comment. And so the neighbors around the area have an opportunity to talk about what their concerns are and then you have an opportunity to place conditions that will alleviate those concerns. Planned unit developments, I see that you use that tool quite a bit. That's, as you know, that's where the piece of property is completely lifted out of the zoning ordinance. It's like a blank sheet of canvas and you guys get to design whatever you want on there and you can have manufactured home communities develop that way. And again, it requires a public hearing, it requires the public to comment and you get to hear what the concerns are. Manufactured home subdivision, nothing different. If I want to build a manufactured home subdivision, it has to be the same requirements as any subdivision in the county. Condominiums, manufactured homes have been used in the condominium status and that is, is very similar to a community where the homes are owned by the, by the people who own the homes and then the underlying land is some kind of conglomerate that operates the property. And here's the big one, and I think you guys have already addressed some of this with your recreational vehicle ordinance, is accessory dwelling units. So, all over the country, let's be honest, accessory dwelling units were always a no-no. And not only that, we said, if you want an accessory dwelling, that's a second dwelling on the property, it has to be a family member. You know, and you have to, it has to be a hardship status where, you know, they have to, I've got to be there to take care of my mom or, you know, she, this person needs a caretaker or whatever. What we're seeing all over the country in planning is that people are starting to recognize that the accessory dwelling unit is one of, a very easy and perfect way to address affordable housing issues. Because it allows someone who owns a piece of property to place a second dwelling on there. Now you might put conditions on that. It might be smaller, like nothing over a thousand square feet or whatever you decide to do. But it allows double the amount of housing for that accessory dwelling. Not only that, the person who owns the property might be able to make a little money off of it. The person who's renting it gets a lower cost housing because it's usually less expensive to build. So it really is a way to look at addressing your affordable housing needs and possibly utilizing manufactured homes from three hundred and forty square feet up to a single or double wide to be allowed on the property. Okay, preventing, not in my backyard. We've already talked about alleviating concerns. If you use any one of these planning tools that's allowed under state law, it requires public hearings, it requires public comment. And by giving public comment and you listening to the public comment tends to alleviate the concerns that people might have over their vision of this poorly maintained, you know, tin-can single wides, you know, that are five feet from each other being moved into the county. Standards and conditions, you can place whatever standards and conditions you want on there. Public input, we talked about. Construction, we've talked about. There's this perception that manufactured homes are poor quality. They are not. They are built to the same standards. Well, I won't say they're the same standards. A lot of manufactured homes do allow two-by-fours instead of two-by-sixes that a stick-built home allows, but it's mainly the same standards. Maintenance, so that's, that's the best part. You all have the authority to say, this is how this piece of property is going to be maintained. You don't really have that authority when it comes to like a residential development. You do have that authority when it comes to a manufactured home park. You can talk about how it's going to look, how it's going to be landscaped, how it's going to, the streets are going to be maintained. And all of that is at the expense of the community itself, not the county. Manufactured home parks give a sense of community. A lot of manufactured home parks, which are legal, are fifty-five and over. People feel more safe in them, they like living in them. And in fact, that is where most of the developers want to invest their money because there are many, many senior citizens, and I'm one of them, that want to downsize and want to live somewhere where they feel safe. And then the design features. So there's some pictures here, there's some pictures in your handout that look, that show you what the inside of manufactured homes now look like. And they are, they are identical to what you get in a stick-built home. Marble countertops, hardwood flooring, you know, sheet-rocked walls, none of that old paneling that you all remember when you went into your aunt's mobile home twenty years, thirty years ago. So it's, it's, they're definitely a home. So reaching your affordable and workforce or student housing goals, the first thing to do is to take a look at your development ordinances. So when I look at development ordinances, and even the ones that have just been recently redone, there's sometimes wording that it's not, it's not meant to imply this, but it does, that just really discourages any type of affordable housing. It's, so take a look, see what it, see what it says. Update it, see if there's any hidden obstacles in your ordinance that you might be able, when you're going through an upgrade, to remove. So that when people come in, their first impression is not, oh, they don't want alternate forms of housing here. Their first impression is, wow, this county's really easy to work with. And you may already be. A mend your codes if you need to. And encourage housing and land developers. There, like I said, there is becoming the new thing and I think that you will find developers. I know, I know of at least two developers in the southern half of the state that are looking to invest. I'm sure we can find some in the northern half of the state if you want to partner with them. And when I say partner, the partnering might only be, we're inviting you in, we want to talk to you about this development, we want to see what we can do to make it easy for you to get this kind of development in our, in our county. And then experiment. And there's been a lot of experimentation. City of Boise just bought a manufactured home park and they are running it because they want to understand how it works, what they can do, and their whole goal is to turn it over to the residents and then buy another one and turn it over to the residents and then possibly develop one and turn it over to the residents. So it's not a city burden, but it's a way to help developers and the residents to own their own property. Housing resources are right there, they're also in your book. There's quite a bit more in your book. And, any questions? Yes?
So, manufactured housing and mobile homes are basically the same. I mean, except one's probably seventy-six or was, close to seventy-six.
But when you say the same thing, they're not the same thing. They're two different, separate forms of housing. But they're both on a chassis and they're both brought in on wheels, yes.
When you talk about a manufactured home entity, it also could have mobile homes.
Yeah, that's up to you. A lot of counties right now have said no more mobile homes. The ones that are here are grandfathered, but no new ones. You can't move in a mobile home into our county. I would say probably a third of the counties have that restriction right now. You cannot move in a mobile home. But that's up to you. Like I said, for some people, that fulfills their housing need and that's the only thing they can afford. But rehabbing a mobile home, if it has not been rehabbed, can run into some dollars.
So you don't have a mixed, mixed parks?
You can, yes. So right now, you probably have mixed parks. Because they started when it was the mobile home and now they're, have manufactured homes in there. And I'm not advocating at all that you go in there and say, oh, get rid of the mobile homes. No, that's people's property. And, you know, they have private property rights. You just can't walk in and take away their property that they paid for. What, but what some counties are saying is because of how old they are and because of their construction, in the future, we don't want to encourage that type of housing in our area. But yes, you can have mixed use in your, in your parks. And some parks obviously have recreational vehicles in there too, and recreational vehicle spaces.
So is there a difference between a mobile home and a manufactured home in terms of whether it's considered personal property?
No. The difference is how it's assessed and what taxes they pay on it. And the taxes on a mobile home are going to be a lot less than the taxes on a manufactured.
Because it's considered personal property.
Yeah, it's personal property. Well, personal and, and I'm assuming your county's the same as all the ones I've talked to. Your tax rate gets applied to both property, real property and personal property. It's the same tax rate. It's just whatever it's assessed. Yeah, I don't know. I could do the research, but I.
Mobile homes are a challenge for assessment. Manufactured homes are assessed the same way as a traditional single-type home.
Right.
Yeah.
And then what we do up here is, you know, we have to have them certified for bank finances, right?
Right.
And so you get that state certification, how to turn it into real property and assess just like a regular state.
You're talking manufactured home or a mobile home? Yeah, okay. So, and that's, that was the point I was making, is that when you allow mobile homes to be moved in, the assessment's going to be a lot lower. The assessment, that's what it's taxed on, is the assessed value, is going to be a lot lower than if you encourage manufactured homes in your county. Because the manufactured home is considered the same as a stick-built home when it comes to assessments. The mobile home is not. If you want to talk about depreciation, the mobile home depreciates.
So I think, you know, mobile homes, manufactured homes and traditional homes, you know, constructed homes onsite have their own respective positives and negatives. And so it's really, in my mind, a zoning issue where they become compatible and the current homes are afforded some kind of zoning protection, if you will. But when you speak about affordable housing, which is an important consideration these times, actually, mobile homes were probably more affordable than manufactured homes.
Correct, you can buy a mobile home for three thousand dollars.
Because you're older. Well, not necessarily. You can buy a new mobile, a new mobile home, can you not?
No.
No.
You cannot.
No, by definition, they're all pre nineteen, pre, was it seventy-six?
Pre nineteen seventy-six.
By definition, they're all forty years old.
So anything being manufactured now on wheels.
Is a manufactured home.
Built to a different set of standards.
But can it look like a old-style mobile home?
Yeah, but they don't, not, well, not for the last twenty years because nobody wants a ten-sided, ten-foot.
Well, I understand that and then the flat roofs, obviously.
Yeah, and you don't even see flat roofs anymore in a, in a, you might see some on the single wides, but you don't see them on most manufactured homes. So, so, and that's what I'm trying to get at, is we're not discriminating against mobile homes. We're just saying that they are so old now. Well, seventy-six, what's that, fifty years? Almost fifty years.
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven. Forty-seven, well, my house was built in seventy-six, so. But I don't live in a mobile home, I live in a house, but it was built in, so I'm thinking fifty years. Yeah, because of their age and their condition, they might not be the most ideal type of affordable housing you want to encourage.
Well, just from the standpoint of wiring and your switch for that, your switch box and stuff like that. I lived for about ten years in a, in the seventies-built mobile home and the wiring was shorting out. I could not get breakers anymore. The breakers simply were not manufactured.
Well, they utilized aluminum wiring, which can't use, and it was substandard. And that's why when you hear about a mobile home fire, it's usually what the cause is, is the old wiring. Because it wasn't, it wasn't built to any standard.
No, it was built and the useful life seems to be about thirty years.
Yeah, and you talked about protecting the housing that's already here. That's already, that's grandfathered. I mean, state law has a private property rights section that says that you can't take people's property without paying them for it, I mean, basically. And, well, unless you want to do eminent domain. But, so, so whatever is here is already here. That's not the issue. But there will be an issue if someone has an old mobile home that they want to move to another piece of property. Because the minute they want to move that, they have to get it rehabilitated.
They violated their grandfathered laws.
Yeah, yeah, well, not only that, well, if you're, if you allow mobile homes, it's fine to move it. But what happens is, is that then they have to rehabilitate it and then you're looking, they're looking at thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars to rehabilitate, especially if it was built with those smaller windows in the bedrooms. Because then they got to cut it out, put in the big egress windows in the bedrooms. That was the other issue with those, is they had those little like fold-out windows and, you know, in the bedrooms, so people couldn't get out when there was a fire. So all of that has to be done before you can relocate a mobile home.
On the modular homes, I guess, I'm learning now that my, my language was improper. I always thought of anything that was built in a factory as a manufactured home, but there's a difference between modular and manufactured.
Don't tell the modular people.
Basically, in your experience, considered the same as a stick-built house?
Oh, yeah, yeah. They have to build it, build it to the same standards. The only difference is, is they build it off-site. So what you're seeing nowadays is, and we've got a, we've got a plant down, down in the Treasure Valley. This plant actually builds sections of homes, trucks them out to a subdivision, and they're building these sections of homes, it's a temporary plant for one subdivision. And they're building the homes on this little piece of property in this little temporary tent thing and then moving it out to the subdivision and placing them. And they're saving thousands of dollars on the cost of the house by doing it that way. Because it's, once again, it's a manufacturing line and they can bulk buy the material. So yeah, it's, but they have to meet IRC code and it doesn't matter if someone brings a manufactured home in here, it still has to meet the IRC code because those homes get inspected by the state and it's required by the state, not by you. Same with the manufactured homes. Say, the manufactured homes are all inspected by the state, they're inspected way, even before they hit the dealer's lot. So it doesn't matter whether you have codes or not, those homes are going to be meeting the required codes.
So have you done any studies on economics of modular versus onsite built?
Modular's costs are, I haven't actually looked at their costs, but from what I understand, there is, the state has what's called the Factory Built Structures Board, which is actually the modular and the manufactured home people on this board. And they talk about the different rules and laws. So you're looking at probably a higher cost for modular homes than a manufactured home. But I doubt you're looking at onsite, that it's as high as onsite. But since I represent the Idaho Manufactured Home Association, I guess that's something I could find out. Get back to you on.
So you don't, you don't deal with them much?
No, I don't deal with them very much. I know what, I know what they are, I know how they're built, I know how they get to the site, you know, on the back of trailers, but it's, it's not my area of expertise.
Other questions?
Well, I appreciate you inviting me up here. It was a wonderful drive. It was a great day to be here and you guys have just a beautiful county. I'm going to go back, okay, let me ask. I go back down Highway Two because I got to get this Spokane. Is that a good drive or should I take the highway?
Beautiful.
Okay, that's what I'll do then.
Thank you very much.
Okay, yes, and we're available. Our contact information is on here. If you have any questions, give us a call, we'd be happy to answer them.
Great, but thank you very much for coming.
Can I have a couple of your?
Why don't I leave that staff right there?
Because I'll distribute it to some of the different municipalities.
Okay, and I do appreciate, one, the second one, did you? Okay, and I do appreciate, one, the second one, if if there's enough. I appreciate you guys, Panhandle and showing up, I really appreciate that. Appreciate your attention. Yeah, I did, but I did bring fifty there.
I will nail you and I I'm blessed to give you the voice more than.
All right, so we're going to go back to the consent agenda. The minutes have now been, we'll leave Luke.
I'm going to shake her hand.
I was going to say, thank you so much for coming. So we're at the consent agenda, minutes of October three, twenty twenty three, it has been posted, if you had a chance to look at it, it's not very long.
Objections?
Objection? Right here, hearing no objection, the minutes of October three, twenty twenty three are approved. And we'll move to the election of the chair and vice chair. Nominations, nominations are open, I suppose.
I'd like to nominate Alan Songstead for chair.
I'll second that motion.
Yeah, I'm just gonna say, I like to.
I do too.
Donna's vice and Ellen is chair, that's fine.
I agree.
You guys are willing to continue, I agree, it's been working well.
I would hope Don's feeling, I mean, he's not here.
Don's not here, so he gets no voice. He doesn't get to choose. All right, so we have a nomination, so any object to that? Objections, okay, I guess I'm the chair. Did I hear a nomination for Donna's vice chair?
And then I'll second that if you need a second.
All right, and any objection to Don being the vice chair? He's not here to object, so. All right, we're going to go to, so Panhandle Health is here. And you, are you going to address the vacation rental ordinance or are you addressing something else?
I'm not sure what.
Oh, you you asked me, my permission asked me to invite them to talk about public services.
Okay, great.
Public comment period, I sent them the ordinance last week. There are any issue where I drafted up a lot of changes and the draft got deleted, so I had to go back in and review and make some more changes. So I got to them, I want to say Thursday, Friday last week. They have the most today, as far as I know, drafted up our public services and that's also been posted on our website.
All right, so with the permission of the commission, I I suggest that we move to a workshop on public services so that we can can have a discussion with Panhandle Health. And that is a that is a public workshop. We don't have it on here. Natural resources and.
It's on my copy.
Yeah.
Natural resources and land use are not over the public comment at public services.
Yeah, they're all three there.
It's second item under common plan.
Okay, there it is. All right, so just to get a little background.
Oh, Donna, your vice chair.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks for coming, Donna.
Congratulations.
It's like a reminder email.
He was busy playing.
Here you go, here's your pamphlet.
You got one?
And congratulations.
All right, so we're going to discuss public services and the latest version is version four, is that right?
It's an October seventeen version, it should be version four, it was a PDF version.
On October eleventh. Oh, let's do that again. So we have to use the word. Is that the latest one?
Which one?
October eleventh is, it looks like last modified, but the date and the name says ten seventeen.
Okay.
So it's today's date, it's a version four PDF.
All right, so hopefully we're all.
That's the one we, yeah.
So it's version four PDF?
Yes.
Okay.
So we would love to have any input, Panhandle Health?
If you want to just start in on it, on this for this one particular section, Jason and I were reviewing and one thing I would suggest removing from there is the according to the January nineteen eighty eight memo we're continuously doing memorandums of understanding with each or with health districts and DEQ. So it's kind of putting us to have a date in there.
Is there an MOU that's just?
We have a current one, but I guess one thing is this, it's always going to be changing and I feel like this will have the most oomph if it's not doing something that might be updated next.
Updated regularly.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I wonder if we should move the microphone over here so we can pick both of them up.
Are there two subsequent statements in that paragraph, correct, though, that you guys do individual and DEQ does?
They could be a little tweaked, they're a little bit not quite right. One of the things to know is that, let's see, according the DEQ is, okay, so DEQ is not necessarily responsible for all of the engineering technical plans. We we actually as a health district review a lot of engineering and different planning. So it's not, I'm not sure that there's much benefit to have that statement in there. We both do that, it just depends on the size of the system. And also that statement is kind of making it seem like they have the responsibility, DEQ, for all central systems, which is not in fact the case, you there's lots of central systems that might be just two or three lots and and or even five or eight lots in a community and they are responsible for their own systems. Panhandle Health will have issued the septic permit for it, but then the landowners themselves are responsible for them. And I can tell you from communicating with realtors in the area, this this could be interpreted kind of misunderstood if we were to leave something like this in there, because people would think that their system is somehow has like long term operation, maintenance oversight or something by DEQ, which is absolutely not the case, the landowners maintain it themselves, so. So I would suggest definitely keeping the jurisdictional authorities between the two agencies, that it's through an MOU between the two agencies. I think, I mean, this is up for you guys to decide, but I I I think it wouldn't hurt to point out that in Idaho, every landowner is required to obtain a permit for whatever type of system they're going to do or an approval. But that's up to you if you want to incorporate that. Just for your guys' awareness, and again, this is kind of, I'm just kind of saying this conversationally and you guys can determine what you think is helpful. But there are central systems, there's individual septic systems, which is what comprises the majority of the wastewater and development in this county, individual septic systems. There's also shared systems that might be between just two neighbors or whatever. And then we go up to larger community systems and up to as far as what's LSAS, which is just another version of a community system, which is, the LSAS is what's over twenty five hundred gallons per day. So right now you have the definition of a central system is defined as something that receives more than twenty five hundred, that's it is, an LSAS is a central system, but by definition in the state of Idaho, a large soil absorption system, which is an LSAS, is over twenty five hundred gallons per day and you could have a central system that's less than that, if that makes sense. So I would say really.
Yeah, how would you define a central system?
Any any system that's.
Two dwellings or.
More than two?
Yeah.
Anything that's shared between a couple parcels or dwellings.
Well, so you just said two different things, is is two neighbors sharing a system, is that a central system or just a shared system?
Between them it is, it's a central shared, that's why, I guess, well, that's what we were talking about before this. I'm not sure the point of going into all the nitty gritty of all of these types of systems from the purpose of this.
I think the only, in my opinion, others may have different opinions, but my opinion, the only reason would be is if the way they're managed or permitted changes at those definitional breakpoints.
The only real, the only big distinction is that the category over twenty two thousand five hundred gallons per day, which is about ten single family residences, three bedrooms. Over that, there's a there's they require to have an operation operator, wastewater operator, operation and maintenance agreement. There's a lot of other requirements specifically with the operation and maintenance of that individual up to that threshold that that really doesn't, and that, as Catherine mentioned, that's one of the big misunderstandings when people either real estate side or when they buy into these properties, just not understanding that there is no requirement to have operation and maintenance. They can choose to do that, but it's not a requirement of the state rules and that causes a lot of friction between property owners and then developers and so forth, so I don't know that it's 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 hard to say whether that's appropriate for the comprehensive plan or, you know, it's really one of our concerns other than that is that any of these systems, whether it's an individual home, large soil absorption or anything in between, any subsurface sewer disposal and really any sewer system is designed for a specific use. You know, when we're talking about subsurface or septic systems, it's typically numbers of residences or the number of bedrooms. That's another concern with if we were, you know, I think it's be separate, but to to list all the different systems, that's that's a really common misunderstanding, if people don't understand that limitation on the on the design and the capacity of the systems. And it's it's hard to capture all of that in a comprehensive plan, so it might help to just kind of keep it more general, I guess.
And like the most basic general breakdown of this here is that Panhandle Health District, all health districts in the state of Idaho permit subsurface systems, so septic systems that are discharging into the, you know, installed and in the ground themselves. DEQ has the authority over all of the other types of reuse permits or municipal.
So that's a clear dividing line.
Yeah, that's probably.
That's that that to me, if you're trying to explain that, especially leading into the seatable blah 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 for the municipal, like it's almost, I don't know if you, because even I guess the municipal definition, I'm not, do you even know what that means?
It really, it, I don't know that that's.
I don't know if it has, but there's. Subsurface health districts, all the other types of permits.
So for our purposes, we have a category of subsurface disposal systems, which the vast majority of which in this county are individual, but they don't have to be. There are some shared ones, could be two, could be more than two. But is it true then, the next statement, that if they go over twenty five hundred gallons a day, then they're automatically there there's something else besides subsurface at that point? Or they're a large subsurface that.
Yes, they're large subsurface and the the only, and just to be clear, all of those, the health district still has regulatory authority for issuance of the permits and the approvals and all of that, even if they're a large soil absorption system over twenty five hundred gallons. However, we work in tandem with DEQ to see if the fees, the site's even feasible for such a thing or just kind of the ongoing reporting, because they do have more requirements when you have such a large quantity of wastewater in one spot.
So if that sentence was. What, how does that strike?
Which which sentence?
A central system is defined because it's a it's a problematic, it's getting into detail.
Okay, I see what you mean. I believe that if you read the entire sentence, though, it's accurate.
Which sentence?
Where it says a central system?
The last sentence.
I think I think I think what I think what's been the distinction.
Well, a central system could certainly be less than twenty five hundred gallons.
But an LSAS says four or five hundred or more serves more than ten.
Yeah, I think I think I think your your suggestion is is a good one, that we basically find Panhandle Health jurisdiction by subsurface and all others, DEQ.
Yeah.
So the sewage systems that use irrigation, stuff like that, that's DEQ.
What I think is helpful about that is that if the concept is for people to understand, like who actually does have regulatory authority for issuance of the system itself, it's, that's the breakdown in the most basic.
So I think we could probably take out everything after the end of the first sentence and just basically substitute it with Panhandle Health has jurisdiction over subsoil, subsurface disposal systems. Well, I think we can leave it that. And DEQ has jurisdiction over.
All other types.
All others.
See that that sentence where it says, after it says memorandum of understanding, the two agencies, Panhandle Health District is responsible for reviewing and permitting if we got rid of individuals.
Oh, yes.
Just get rid of the word individual and that's accurate.
Yes, there you go.
Or you could, we could, we could say individual and shared or whatever, either way, either.
It's all subsurface, that'd be like your most.
I think that's the distinction.
And as I was saying, the DEQ, while they do approve engineering and technical plans and stuff, it's up to you guys if you, I mean, I don't know what you think about that, but I mean, it's sort of an, I'm not sure how helpful that is.
Essentially joint responsibilities.
What types of engineering plans are they?
Like we review them for things under twenty five hundred gallons per day unless there's a reason to consult with them. Over twenty five hundred gallons, they review the engineering.
Even on a septic system?
Yeah.
Okay, that would be a pretty large septic system.
And just to make sure too, that we're clear, every subsurface septic system, including all of them listed in that table, which some of the we'll get to that, but some of them are actually subs, even in the sewer districts, they're actually subsurface septic systems. And as Jason was saying, they're designed and approved for specific flows already. So where I see confusion in the community is that there's this perception that any community system or any sewer district has this like unlimited capacity for more and more connections. And that's, I I don't really know how that works in all the municipal world of DEQ, but certainly from a subsurface subject system standpoint, it's not that way, it's designed for specific flows from the get go.
So if we took the DEQ responsible for approving engineering, that would that would make this paragraph a lot.
Except for where it says DEQ is responsible for approving, we should add for specification for municipal and central systems receiving more than twenty five hundred gallons of black waste or wastewater a day. Because they're not, they're not responsible for all central systems.
That is not a bad idea, because then you could have, it is clear that there's more to it for twenty, over twenty five hundred.
Yeah, and the helpful part of that, because really this is, you know, comprehensive plan, so there's, if anybody's really wanting to get into any of these, we get much more into the details with them, but that, just so that anybody that's proposing that or thinking about that would understand that it's that there are multiple agencies, that that it seems like that would be helpful from a planning standpoint.
Who's typing?
Probably should even say DEQ.
I'm not touching, I'm not touching anything else.
Okay, so that sentence says the DEQ is responsible for, right where you're, and central systems receiving more than twenty five hundred gallons of black waste or wastewater in a day. And so we need to, what I'm hearing is right where we say see the tables, we need to put a little caveat there that says, you know, these these different sewer districts.
You define gray water.
It's all encompassing, yep.
I learned a couple of things in a company.
Yeah.
You learn the gray water and black water, the same thing.
We still need to either cross out individual or substitute if all permitting all subsurface sewage systems. But yeah, that encompasses.
So then where we say see the table, as you mentioned, we need to put perhaps not in the table, but maybe just a sentence right there at all?
I don't have this table. That's why I still have to highlight it.
Oh, okay.
So that was the the information I sent as a request and a list of all the.
Oh, that's what you wanted for that? Okay, so are the figures all the sewer district maps?
Yep. So I got, I realized this by. Yep. I, I realized this when I read that, I'm like, oh, I didn't have the figure notes. I'll add two digits, whatever they are, and then I'll call it.
We have comments about all of that, and I just want, it's just to, for conversation, you guys can figure out what you think, but, the information for all of the systems, like, existing, that were in the, or that are in the existing comp plan table are like a mishmash. And so there are some that are not, they're like small community systems that aren't regulated by, they weren't, I mean, they're just, I'm not sure what the point of them to be in a, let's see, how can I explain this? It's saying it's a list of municipal sewer districts. And so if it is a list of municipal sewer districts, I guess I have one question of how do you determine what is a sewer district?
We're not married to that language. It's just leftover from when we've been updating this, and I was gonna see what I got from you guys and update what the title is.
I was trying to figure out who even says it's a district, like, is that something from the state, like a taxing, how is it?
Initially, Matt and I, initially, Matt and I had a list of all the taxing districts for sewage. Yep, exactly, that's where the maps came, idea came from. And then the comment was, well, I'm sure we can find a list of all the other shared systems out there, just like we have a list for all the shared wells from DEQ. So I requested from DEQ, who told me to ask you guys, who said.
Yeah, and I was confused about that, because the vast majority of those systems are DEQ. They're not, they, they are not subsurface. And so only Pinto Point, Swan Shores.
Yeah, they may have been misunderstood.
Whatever else. There's a few of them that are subsurface that are DEQ, I mean, PhD.
I don't think we're looking just for the taxing districts that are subsurface, but any shared systems. I think what the idea is, is, is it viable to establish density for shared septic systems like it is for shared water systems? When we look at it from the land use hat, that's what we're looking at, like, can we take a lot and go down to X, X amount, right, from a two and a half to a one acre or something like that, if there's a shared septic system? So, is it a viable solution? So if we have a list that kind of shows it's been viable in the past, it's continued to be permitted, is that a good use of land use for determining densities in the future? Am I wrong, Swade? So, I'm just thinking, there's a lot of detail here that I think I would ask the staff to resolve, the health district, and have them have some one-on-one time, if you will, to amend this, or bring back to the planning commission at a later date.
I think it would be.
So we don't try to detail it out at this time and still have some error.
Do we need to give them some guidance about what we want them?
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, that's what I was, because.
What do we, what do we want in that list?
Because under 2,500 gallons per day would be really challenging for us to figure out. It's like 50 years of records.
Two adjacent lots share a septic system kind of thing.
Yeah, we are.
You know, which I don't think we need to delineate all that.
And again, let's be, all be clear on this, that these existing systems are limited, they're, you know, they're, most of them around our, our ad capacity, and they really can't accommodate more. And we also don't know, it's like kind of an ongoing issue with us, is these community systems. In recent years, it's become what, I spend a ton of time on these, so, where, what they will mean for the density or whatever, I'm not sure.
Well, as a general rule, isn't it the case that we can't put more homes on that system than what the capacity of the system was designed for? I mean, that's going to be the bottom line.
Yeah, and I just don't want this to be interpreted as.
It's not a matter of how many homes per acre. It's about whether you have more gallons per day of capacity in that system.
And, and sometimes that is entirely based on the, the design engineers, specific design. It's not going to do with site limitations or the amount of land available. And that, that seems like that would be a helpful kind of clarification in here, even, just to make that point, that you're exactly like you say, that they're all out of.
It seems to me like it's just describing what we're, stable, municipal, doesn't seem they should be.
No.
It was a sewer district, municipal.
Well.
Go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna say, we do have, so the, the challenge is going to be 100% capturing every, you know, especially if it's a two-party septic system or small central system, but we do have a list, so any, any central system that has been classified as that through our database, we do have a list of those that we could provide. We're not going to have, though, I mean, just like our distinction shows here, any, any larger system that's not subsurface, we wouldn't have any role in that, so that's why, that's why we wouldn't have that. So DEQ might have, you know, thought maybe you were just referencing a subsurface system. So we definitely have, like, record of the large soil absorption systems, and we could provide some level of just basic information, but I think an important part of that would be the capacity, just because, just so that there's an understanding that they are of limited capacity. One of our challenges with these, the large soil absorption systems, is that we have the most in the state, but they're all very old, and so they're essentially either at or over capacity a lot of times. And so that's, that's one of the things that we run into quite a bit. It's just exactly like Catherine, that people think there's actually, there's more capacity.
In terms of providing guidance in the planning document in the comp plan, is it, is it as really as simple as, you know, individual systems are designed for individual homes period over and out, and any shared system is designed with this, with a certain capacity? Whether you can add homes to that is a function of where it is relative to the capacity of that system. And that has to be evaluated before you can decide to add even one home to any of those, whether it's two homes on a shared septic, or whether it's a community of 500 homes that are on a, a big shared system.
Yep.
And that doesn't matter whether it's 2,500 or two. It's just, is it at capacity or not?
Correct.
And, and that's what I was seeing in that last sentence, maybe we just look, a little caveat in there, that each of these districts, is, they're unknown whether they're at the capacity or not. We're probably not going to be able to find all that.
And even whether the infrastructure actually exists. So say, Sagal Valley Water and Sewer has water, but they don't have sewer. We've got, one of yours listed was Tressel Creek. I've never even heard of a sewer district called Tressel Creek.
That makes sense, though. So we, we run into that in essentially every county, and sometimes it'll be a taxing district that this, that the infrastructure was never installed. And so that's the other concern with some, so for example, like the whole backside of Hayden Lake in QD County shows a sewer district there, so people commonly try to buy properties and they want to connect to the sewer district that, that doesn't exist. So that's one thing that we just want to be careful about, is making sure that if any of these taxing districts, you don't have the infrastructure, that that's either somehow caveated or cleared. And here, just because that's, again, something that we run into, where people just see that, those boundaries, think they're within a sewer district, there may not even be any infrastructure there. That might be, you know, for the purposes of building it someday, or whatever the intent was.
Hopefully they're not collecting taxes.
Yeah.
Fees. So some of these, some of these sewer districts that are listed, it, 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 it doesn't exist?
The district, that's why I was wondering, what is it? I don't know, I don't fully understand what the district, if it's a taxing district that you're getting from wherever, and I'm sure they must exist, but whether the actual system infrastructure exists, they're all different.
I mean, they're two different things. I mean, or not, they don't match exactly. And the other thing I would say here, again, is this is an overview, and I would caution about getting too much detail in here in a planning document, and a lot of that would allow the flexibility to work into the detail when issues come up concerning sewage disposal. So I, you know, when you start talking about specific gallonages, and this system and that system, I think that's perhaps too confining for an overview statement of a planning document.
Which I like, because you put this here of who's involved, then it's like, well, then the people know who to go to for all the nitty gritty.
Right, and then, yeah, stay out of the detail, because there's always issues, I guess.
I, I do know that, I get a lot of people who ask, what's this sewer, so is that, I mean, part of this is for the community to use, which they probably ask about that for you guys.
I'm sure there's two literally people that have read our comp plan other than us.
So I see why people would want to know about the sewer districts and where they are, but it's just, what they mean may not come across.
It seems to me that, other than a statement that, you know, capacity is obviously a factor, I don't think we need to get into trying to, trying to list, you know, central systems or, you know, shared systems. I don't think we need to do that. I think we, we can list the sewer districts and sewer and water districts. You seem to be making a distinction here between sewer district and sewer and water districts. I'm not sure what the distinction is, because I know, you know, our home is, is on a granite reader sewer and water. They provide sewer, they don't provide water.
Right, see, that's another example, yeah.
And I, I think that's probably true of some of the others in the Creech Lake area, so I don't know why they're called sewer and water districts, if they are, but.
Aspirations?
Yes.
It, it could be that it's a, like a paperwork process, right, that if they hit a big enough well and they want to start providing it, they don't have to then go back in through another process to start levying a tax for being a water district as well. I mean, Sagal's the same, right?
Sagal, Sagal Sewer and Water, except it doesn't have sewer anymore. If it did, it's got that field, but, just one.
We just went off the taxing entities, what they're labeled as, and we created a map for those, whether they have all the infrastructure or whatnot. We just went off the taxing district.
So I think just including.
So another thing might be just lists that these taxing districts exist, that may or may not have infrastructure associated with them.
And capacity or capacity.
And that way, there's still a list there as reference, that people know that the data may not, you know, that there may be holes in the data that were, that were given and below that. They still have to do their own due diligence, but at least they've got a lead to work on that.
I like that idea, and it's a, it's a clear dividing line. We're telling people what we're listing, right? It's the taxing districts that exist, and not anything else that's not a taxing district. There's still be lots of shared systems out there that don't show up as a taxing district. Have to go do the research to figure that out.
So the bottom of that map, or whatever, you have that.
And I think it's fine. I think we need to add in there, though, something about, do we add it? That's what Jake's, technically, right now.
Were you wanting, I don't want to muddy the waters, but were you wanting to also include things that are not necessarily a sewer district, but it's like the city of Sandpoint? Or, okay.
Not if it's, if it's incorporated cities, that's not under the jurisdiction of this comp plan, so. Kind of, kind of case-by-case basis kind of thing, or?
Oh, that's a good point. Why don't you add something about, that capacity has to be considered in development approvals?
Capacity of existing municipal systems or something like that, or city-owned systems.
Well, not city, just sewer taxing districts.
I would try to use the most generic term we can that we think describes it. So is shared systems, or is that the best?
That's why municipal keeps getting crapped up, but I don't know what that even means or what.
I mean, by definition, it's central shared, I mean.
Any shared system, and I think it's, you know, anything, anything from two homes and up is a shared system, and, and the capacity has to be considered if you're going to add another home to it.
Shared and central, so we can just say, just, I've heard you saying both.
Yeah, it's all a little.
I like shared, because I think it's, the layman will understand it more clearly.
So, so, capacity of shared systems, what should be considered when?
Must be considered, when, when adding.
I mean, that's the key point, I think, that really is.
Nothing specific.
I'm supposed to use the word must or shall.
Yeah.
Should really, really be considered.
As a for instance.
Swade, what is this, current sewer districts, or, I think it really should say and/or water districts, but water, that gives you three options, or water by itself, sewer by itself, or both combined.
But we're only talking about 1.1 is sewer disposal.
Yep.
We're getting into water systems, I think, in 1.2 or 1.3.
We want, we're water.
Well, only in the sense of, it could be a water and sewer district.
And/or, it is not a very sound structure.
Right.
Are there any water and sewer districts in our town?
Oh, yeah. Sagals one, yeah. Even if they don't.
You mean, actually?
I meant that actually, that actually functions that way.
That actually have both.
Yeah.
Southside. Sagal had one, I guess.
Bottle bay provide water? The bottle base provide water, too?
I don't think water, just sewer.
Just sewer, yeah.
How do we want to finish that? Bottle bay, do they do more?
They only.
I think it's just sewer.
It's just sewer.
There's different water. There is, just, just.
Determine density.
If we're in the sewer section, let's stick to sewer. If we've got a different water section, then we can, then we can mention them again in the water section, if they do have both. You know, and that will simplify your set, set structure.
Well.
Whatever table you end up coming up with, or just, rather than trying to do everything to what, you know.
Well, the problem is, the problem is it's sort of nomenclature.
Exactly, the grammatical monstrosity that covers everything. Keep it simple, and each of its own section.
I'm glad, I think, I think it looks good.
So what, back to our giving planning staff direction, which I appreciate, what information do we want to get from Panhandle Health when it comes to these shared systems? Like, do we want a threshold? Do we want a list of anything over 2,500? Do we not want a list at all, you know, just have some verbiage as we agree on, or?
I thought we were, I, I like just doing the ones that are based on taxing districts.
Okay, that's fine. The only reason I ask is that we have our list of shared water systems that I got from, or shared wells, that I got from DEQ. Now, I think the idea behind requesting this is so we have something similar to compare to as a shared sewer system, right?
And those shared wells, does that go down to like two neighbors that share a well?
Whatever DEQ monitors, so. I think they get involved when there's more than 10. It's actually nine or a number of individuals. I want to say 30 people or 40 people or homes. So, I remember talking to an engineer about it. Sorry, what was that?
10 lots or 25 individuals.
Thank you, 25 individuals or 10, 10 lots.
Or more than six months out of the year.
There you go. So that's, that's the list we have. If we want to get something comparable from, you know, as a, as a sense for shared sewer systems.
Is that even a fail?
I think they, they, they're saying they have them. Do you have it based on like what it's, what it's like permitted for? Like, if we say, hey, can we get a list of everything that's 2,500 gallons or more?
Yes, we could, we could certainly.
We'll date it, so we know, and we understand that when we're collecting data, that it's never going to be 100% accurate, be accurate from the day you send it, and then the next day it's changed, but, okay.
I have a, a thought. So it's saying the capacity of the current sewer districts and water in sewer districts is currently unknown. That's not necessarily accurate, because someone probably knows, whether it's DEQ or whoever the operator or us. So maybe you could put is limited to this, what did I just say? Design, or is variable based on design?
Limited to.
Or limited to design capacity, or?
Because it, really, at any point in time, the capacity would be known, but it's going to change, I guess, is the main, right?
It was limited to.
To design.
The design capacity, something.
Capacity or design, yeah.
Again, I'm, you're going to answer, strikes me, we're getting into a lot of detail here for overview section, maybe we should just say, they should be, DEQ and, DEQ or Health District should be consulted.
Well, this, this should lead to changes in our ordinance. So we don't want to get so generic that when we go to draft the ordinance, we have a ton of gray area, right? So you want to have some guiding document.
But there's so much detail in here.
I think you could even take out that last sentence, now that you just said that.
We should just consult, should be consulted.
You're just telling people they're, they're limited, and they need to figure it out.
Well, I, I, but to Jake's point, I mean, this is supposed to drive code, and the, the principle in the code, I think, should be, for instance, if you're going to think about a, a land division, you should be thinking about, and it's in an area that has a shared septic system, whatever we're going to call it, you should be looking at whether there's capacity, available capacity in that septic system to handle or development or not, and that ought to be a consideration. And, and so I, I think that prin- And, and so I think that principle, those kinds of principles should be in here because those kinds of things potentially drive code.
Who determines those?
Well, you'll have to go look at it.
Not the county.
No, you'll have to go look at it, right? When the application.
And DEQ and or DEQ.
When the application comes in front of whoever it is, zoning commissioner, whoever, they would look at it and say, okay, this is within district XYZ. And we'll have, we'll have to go talk to district X, Y, Z and find out if they have the capacity.
The capacity of these districts are finite and therefore.
Not necessarily.
No. They, they have a limit.
As of today.
Some of them are.
Have a lot of capacity.
I'm not talking about what their current capacity is. I'm talking about do they, do they not permit it originally with a determined ceiling? Okay, so that's finite.
Not all of them.
No, not all of them.
But again, in a general case, they can.
I think it's important to acknowledge that they are, they are, they're limited right now, but doesn't mean they cannot grow. Because if they grow, then.
So to me, that's a reason not to spend a lot of energy trying to document their current capacity.
I mean, you look at the current, you look at the current plan and it has long lists of current capacity. I mean, you notice we've taken a lot of that out, right? So what we're trying to do is cut it down to like, what do we exactly need that's going to help us craft ordinances in the future?
Okay, Don's got a thought.
Right now, it means that they are limited to that of a limited capacity today. And they are not going to be able to grow in the future. That means like they're not going to be able to support further development.
Well, no, because if it's designed to a higher capacity later, then it's.
So I'm thinking here, if we just, if you can walk us through the process. Somebody comes in, they propose something, a single family, whether it's a subdivision, whether it's commercial or something. What does the code say now and what do we want the code to say that they should do? Ultimately, it's talk with Panhandle Health, correct?
Or DEQs.
Well, right, and that may, that may say, well, you need to talk. They go to PhD, they say, you got to talk with DEQ. Is that all? Or does the code have to specify if you're over 2,500 gallons, you got, no. Can we make it as simple as it needs to be? Is that all that's needed? And really, there's nothing right now in the goals and objectives under this component that even leads towards that. And so we're going to put a footnote down here, we need to add a, or something to say, or septic systems, sewage, or septic is talk with Panhandle Health District.
We just need to put their cell numbers, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Call this. That's something to change too, so.
After hours.
Yeah.
I think the only part of the code that refers to that capacity is our public utility facility is used, qualification use permit. That refers to a certain capacity or which you've given you to apply for a separate permit. But then again, we need a determination component in hand.
Yeah, what is that? Which is going to be a threshold, that's where we come from.
Yeah.
Or is this just simple, any and all systems have to go through Panhandle, which is.
Which is to do, yeah.
It's that simple, really. Why mess it up with putting something in that's going to have to be changed later? That part two.
So that means what you were saying. I know that, but how would you then amend this?
First sentence, the first sentence is good.
What does take care of say on sewer systems again?
Maybe the second sentence says, now reaps is good.
It's 65 or, I don't want to.
Then it starts to get fuzzy because I think it's kind of a therefore, after the first two sentences, therefore, every, every applicant for a land use action that is going to result in sewage disposal needs to talk with Panhandle Health District.
Right.
Boom. Or DEQ is appropriate. Just, that'll come, talk with Panhandle, because the baseline is Panhandle.
I concur.
And then it goes, oops, you got to go talk with DEQ and we'll help you in that, which they will.
Simple is good here.
Yeah, I think so. I don't, I just don't see the advantage of adding all this extra detail. Because also if somebody sees that, they say, oh, it says right here that I've got to do this and then it doesn't turn out to be true. They, oh, wait a minute.
You could say consult with the appropriate regulatory authority, even though, but yeah, it's.
Does that put too much of a burden on?
No, no, we already.
Okay, and I, you know, we've seen this over and over again. Every individual that's going to create sewage disposal issue has to talk with. Some people don't.
Realize.
It's good for you to be aware of it, even though it may go to the.
Oh, and they will work together.
Absolutely, they have to.
Yeah.
Says they have to talk with all the districts.
So Don, do you feel that we should, do you believe we shouldn't even have a table and figure?
No.
Oh, I think you, yeah, I think you should have the sewer districts.
I think you should add the word taxing or whatever you guys were going to do there.
Okay, so, so somebody comes in and says, oh, by this table in this complaint, I'm in ABC sewer district. I'll go talk with them. And that's what they should do.
Then what are they going to say?
They're going to say, we have capacity or we will serve or we won't.
Or they're going to say.
They won't give them a will serve. I don't think.
Hopefully, this is the constant, we.
What, what is your role in that? I mean, I, I think that is the sewer district that has to make that determination.
Well, when, when they're subsurface, for example, Pinto Point, Swan Shores, or these subsurface districts that we are involved with issuing tank onlys to connect to those and we work in conjunction with the sewer district. For some of the others, like Granite Reader and the others that are regulated through DEQ, we do not issue tank only permit. So we, if someone called us about that, we would say contact Granite Reader and DEQ. Or really, we'd probably start with DEQ, but.
I think when it comes to sewer issues in Warner County, it's best to send them to Panhandle Health because I realize there are sewer districts that are functioning at different levels.
Yeah.
Some are top notch, some are non-existent. I mean, that's just the way it is. Water districts, whatever, these volunteers are trying to do their best thing. It's best to send them through this document to you folks and you can point them in the right direction.
That's what I was thinking. Unless it's going to be, they're going to go to you and they're going to go with the right, oh, you're within Granite Reader, go to see them. So I'm getting shoved around.
Well, there may be, I mean, at some point, that's unavoidable because back to Alan's question about, you know, do they have capacity or they won't? That is, if they're in a sewer district that's not subsurface, we're not going to know that. So we would prefer that they connect if there's availability. That can only be answered by the sewer district.
Tell them all that.
Yeah.
Or we could, you could just say, go see Jake.
And we would certainly prefer, if it's written to funnel people our way and then we can, you know, redirect them, then to not have a discussion at all with them.
Yeah.
I just, overall, not wanting to divert the district is unnecessary. But you feel that it's, it's a good move.
Yeah, we do it already.
I know.
You'd rather deal with.
It would be consistent that way to get rid of this. Well, they said, they said, they said.
I don't see anything.
I think I heard in one of your earlier statements, unfortunately, you only become aware when there's a problem currently. And that's because there's this confusion that we're trying to clarify here. So by having them go, you first might have through all that.
Absolutely, yeah, allows us to work through these issues before.
Even if the figures showed the districts, it still should say first contact is bad. And you can show them. Because again, it's, it's going to clarify it, it's going to put it in one box.
Even if there's a, even if there's a subdivision, say in like a Coolin Sewer District for 15 connections, you guys still have to issue some kind of permit for that, right? I can remember you talking to me about that, no?
Previously, we did, but no longer. It really comes down to the distinction that we have up there in the first paragraph. If it's subsurface, we, regardless of the size, we're involved. If it's not subsurface, we don't have any involvement.
If comes in and they want to do collective system, they want to do.
Well, we're getting into the weeds a little bit here because if it was a subdivision and we were looking at it to make a new plat, then we would be involved because we would be asking the sewer district and DEQ if the infrastructure existed and if they needed to extend main lines and stuff like that. If there was additional items that needed to be addressed, then we'd be involved from like the plating subdivision side of it. But when it got to people connecting individually and the tanks and stuff, they would do that without our involvement and it would be through the sewer district and DE.
In that direction when they came to, right?
So 90% are going to be in and out of your door. The other 10%, you can reference them.
The other thing is that we, we have a local office here where DEQ doesn't.
Yeah, that's.
The benefits.
People can reach us. And honestly, the way it works at Panhandle Health, we, with everybody of my staff having specific areas, they know what's happening with the sewer districts in their area generally. So they can get a pretty quick answer through us or like redirect it.
All right, so why don't we just change that sentence to what Don said? Therefore, if your applicant is seeking to develop.
Any, any development proposal that creates a need for sewage disposal, subsurface sewage disposal?
Um, we don't want to.
Sewers disposal.
Yeah.
The sewage disposal.
It's waters, yeah.
To consult.
Panhandle.
Needs to contact Panhandle Health District. Sewage disposal. Love to dispose of sewage.
Why did they always mess up? Why everyone's watching? Every time I just spell words and I can't, I look like India.
I know.
Oh, I thought I was Swatty doing it and I was thinking, man, she's off her game.
I told her she needs to start doing it well.
I'm just picking on you.
No, it's fine, it's fine, I'm good. She has so much more experience typing in front of you guys, it's fine.
That, that created.
Yeah.
So do we need the next sentence then? Who cares?
No, I think everything below that.
Well, it's informational, but yeah. You don't want to send somebody looking at information that they're going to walk away with the wrong.
Hey, I'm, I'm, I was a little.
Right, we've had that too many times.
They're down, so.
Yeah.
Starting the rest.
Yeah.
Okay.
Ended after the red line.
Pull that out. You guys want to leave the second paragraph?
I would have it. I would leave it.
And then what list do we want from Panhandle Health? Did we decide it's that list of 2,500 and more?
No, 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 to me, that's too.
Yeah, it's, it's. The list is available at Panhandle Health if somebody wants it. Plus mapping plus their knowledge of where things are. So it's.
Well, that's a good thing.
Pushing it, pushing it out to.
That's a good statement.
Pushing it out to Panhandle Health. There you're.
All in.
All in. First and hopefully last.
Well, there shouldn't be a requirement to be.
Yeah, or, or if we know they don't have capacity, we can have that discussion before somebody's bought the property.
So the last two sentences really are necessary to.
I like those.
Well, I guess we can decide then.
I like the figures that he's.
Something's coming crafted, more or less says what data you guys hold. So a list of, of all subsurface sewage systems?
Wait, say that again?
If I were to list, so if I want a directional sentence to say, hey, go talk to them, they hold your data. What do we say? So a list of or?
All septic permit records, whether, I mean, really, that's all encompassing. All subsurface sewage disposal records, I guess.
Yeah, I don't know that we're different, yeah, differentiating here between the different types.
You guys only have subsurface sewage records though, right?
I didn't know that. For information.
Or, or within Banner County?
So again, I'm trying to think, think this through from a practical application at the counter standpoint. Somebody walks in with a complaint in hand, first we give a gold star. Then they ask a quick, well, there goes this list of districts here, what does that mean for me?
Depends on where you live.
Depends on where you live. County staff going to check that out?
You know, I.
I don't know.
Newbie.
I don't know anybody who's ever read this and said, well, this is what this component states. It goes straight to the land use designation map and that's what you're, oh.
Right, right. So we're looking for this, is it something that's going to feed into the land use chapter? That will help us out in there. That's going to be.
So you want to eliminate all the, all the figures?
Yeah, because we, we don't really care here also about a tax district. We want to know about a subsurface sewage system. That's what we're talking about here.
People want to know about.
Is it 10%? 12%?
About sewer district.
So you're sent right where your cursor is, I don't see any purpose in the rest of it.
Whatever it is, 30, 30,000 built on parcels in the county, what percentage of are in, have anything to do with a sewer district?
Not many, not much.
Most are pretty slick, yes.
Well, that's.
Yeah, that's the.
That's, that's bad, but yeah, out of 30,000 parcels.
Very interesting to know that.
It would be. That's what it kind of sets you seeing. All right, so you want to eliminate the next paragraph, that whole second paragraph?
So do you want to get rid of those figures?
I, yes, I don't think they're serving any useful purpose. Again, if somebody comes in with this map and says, what do I do? Staff's going to say, go see Panhandle Health.
Because the state code says that we need to analyze and review or something like that, general plans for sewage.
Yeah, that's right.
General plans for sewage, general plan for water. General plans is, is kind of the nomenclature behind this or the rationale.
But basically, when you're reviewing it, you need Panhandle Health.
The first one to do is county staff.
So, so the county's plan is to, is Dr. Panhandle, that's our, that's our sewage, that's our plan.
That's our general.
Well, you're saying for projects and stuff, is that what you mean?
Well, anything.
No, I think.
They do send some comments.
That's our direction from Lupa.
But Lupa was written from the perspective of they're thinking about a city that has and operates a sewer system.
Right.
Because that's where it came from and that place down south where they gave the tax for Lupa. And that's the way they all do it down there.
I do.
And, and that's why they ask about, what are your plans for, it's, they're assuming the county had plans to build and operate a sewer system, which we don't.
So we, we do utilize sewer districts, water districts when we talk about different zoning areas, right? We say, you know.
In places where they exist.
Exist or where they're likely to expand is what it says for suburban. So I think having the data in the complaint isn't hurting anything. If anything, it helps when we're writing ordinances, so it's supported by.
I don't see any harm in keeping the tax districts, the sewer districts in there.
Swatty has something too.
That's why.
In some places in the code, we do refer to sewer districts and their sign up in the ordinances. For example, for VRPs, we do require sewer districts to sign up on a permit saying.
They've got a will serve letter.
Yeah, so if you are, if you're using, you're referring to those entities, why not have a map?
I see no problem in keeping those figures. I like them.
I just want to say one more time, just to be clear, that it's not super simple to even like the subsurface sewer districts that we have, like Pinto Point, for example, or others. And we have several that have been trying to expand for a while. It's quite the process if it's an old LSAS that, that doesn't meet current standards for expansion. So, you know, as long as your staff is guiding people to us, we can help them understand that.
That's why that's helpful, having that in.
Yeah.
Pinto Point, does it have capacity?
It's new, isn't it?
It's an old one.
It's for like leased lots.
Yeah, it's an idea, just as an example, that's, that's actually a good example where, I don't remember the exact numbers in terms of how many specific residences it was sized for, but when you go back to the basis for design for that subdivision, it was designed as something like 70 gallons per day per residence. Modern sizing, a three bedroom home would be 250 gallons per day. So it's significantly undersized even for the number of homes that are currently on it, not to mention that the drain field doesn't. Modern sizing, a three-bedroom home would be two-hundred-and-fifty gallons per day, so it's significantly undersized even for the number of homes that are currently on it, not to mention that the drain field doesn't meet sizing standards. So that's just an example where somebody sees out there like, oh, this is, this lot's in the sewer district, there's more to it than, than.
Is there, is there actually a operating district there? They have people in place?
Yeah, and they're trying to expand it, but that's exactly why this would be helpful, because then they don't have any false assumptions, again, not that they're gonna use the complaint, is it? That they're all encompassing.
Questionable how much people are gonna actually use it. They're not gonna really be using the complaint, I don't think, to determine their sewage.
But it, sorry, but it could be helpful from a planning staff perspective though, just to, you know, again, to understand that so that, for the same reason, so that they're not saying, okay, there's this, all this capacity in that area. Then they're consulting with us, that's really the main thing, if you have a conversation about.
Yeah, but I think, you know, even, even though people may not go to the complaint as a source, we're still obligated to apply with Luba and produce one. Otherwise, you could have a six-page one, like boundary county does. I think we're going through the exercise, I think we need to be.
Alright, so. Alright, so are we? Are we, are we, are we making progress here?
Hey Jake. After system or however you want to semicolon and then after. After the however you want a comma.
I appreciate your input. Keep me honest.
Any other comments on this order?
No, really appreciate the opportunity to, to discuss this, I mean, it looks just like Jake was saying, this is much, seems like a much more.
Oh, yeah, we, we did, we, we cut a lot out, so there was a lot in there that seemed like the previous, when you contracted out, you're getting paid by the page or something, so. There's just a lot of detail and info in there that just didn't seem like it was necessary.
It was just so extremely outdated and.
So what about water?
Do you guys have any jurisdiction over water?
Chapter two.
Chapter two, here we are.
Very, very little, honestly, we do, we have, we regulate a small subset of the public water systems. But again, that's really a joint, it's really primarily DEQ that regulates the public water systems, we just regulate some of the smaller. And I, again, I don't know that it would be worth going into the, the distinction with that, but, you know, there is, there's definitely a threshold or a specific definition of what a public water system is, I don't know if that would be helpful to, to capture in, in this.
Water system is, is primarily DEQ and not water resources?
Yes, water resources typically permits the wells themselves, but in terms of the water system, regulated by a Department of Water and Quality.
Like water rights is.
Even if, even if, even if the source is a well on a small public water system.
Yeah, the water rights and.
IDWR permits the well and then DEQ permits the.
Exactly, exactly, yep.
That's how it reads though, it says, DEQ and IDWR regulate the water suppliers and private wells throughout Bonner County. We wanted to split into two sentences to be more specific, we could.
Uh, there's lots of shared water systems that are not regulated by DEQ. It's the, based on that definition of.
Nine connections, twenty-five people, ten connections, twenty-five people.
The water rights would be always, but like the infrastructure or anything else about it, I don't think they would do anything.
What, what is the, is there any point to listing all those shared water things? Systems, you know, like hers condo associations that have a well. They're listed there.
Only, only back to the same comment I had about the shared sewer systems, that it's, is it a viable means for establishing density? So if you wanna show a historical, this has been utilized to establish, to establish density in different areas throughout the county, and here's a list of the current systems. And, and that's essentially, I think, what we're getting at by putting that in there. Again, the state code calls for general plans, we did ask for general plans for all the different water and sewer districts, I think we got a couple of replies for sewer districts, during the data filters, so.
What does private water suppliers mean? Just a private company that supplies water to a, or is that what that is?
I think it means, well, if you look at the list, it's a pretty long list, there would be, resorts are in there.
Yeah, okay, so that's what I was just wondering if you meant.
And then, you know, like condo associations are there.
I think that came right from DEQ's list, it says private water suppliers.
It's a public water supplier, you mentioned that there was a.
Yeah, there's specific, yeah, so twenty, and so that's twenty-five users, every sixty days per year. Typically, that works out to about ten connections, they use a multiplier two and a half, average of two and a half residents per dwelling.
So is private.
I don't, that's, that's typically.
I don't see that figure.
I don't really know what that.
It's at the very bottom, it's the table one, apparently my link is broken on this, I don't know. Clicked it, it's at the top of the page.
You might wanna consult with DEQ about how like this should be worded exactly, but a private, until it's public, it's not really regulated for the infrastructure and all that stuff. They would still get their water rights, but they're not gonna have like, there's not gonna be water quality testing, there's not gonna be like an assessment of the infrastructure and all that. There's not gonna be, so until it reaches the threshold of a public water system, I mean, maybe a public water system, if you're gonna list the private water suppliers, you just wouldn't want it to come across like they are regulated if they're not.
My guess is that that pub, that what's listed there is the private water suppliers are actually public water systems. That would be my guess.
Instead that word regulate, I don't know if we should use the word license, because every well has to be.
As a permit.
Licenses are registered.
Permitted.
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 But not all of them are permitted.
Any well drill is supposed, right, I mean, but every well.
Well, new ones, but older ones.
Depends on how old your water right is.
Sure. Just say private.
I think it was like in the seventies or something that they started. If the well is older.
It was like on my mom's property, that water right dates nineteen forty-four. So do we know that that state sentence that you're stating there Jake is accurate?
I didn't send it.
Regulated by, it sounds like to me not all water supply, private water suppliers are regulated.
All systems that meet the public, it could be a privately owned, but it meets the criteria for a public water system and then that would be.
Not permitted by DEQ, they're permitted by IDWR.
This, this list came from DEQ.
Yeah, and I'm wondering if that's what they mean, if those are privately owned public water systems, which again, it's probably a little getting.
DEQ say that these were regulated?
I'd have to look back at the.
And we could look at the, the list, but it's, I think it's in.
So you're, you're suggesting that maybe public water system meant operated by a government entity?
I don't know what the, public, well, it is, it does have a definition, which is that the number of users.
Yeah, but we may not be using it.
Well, for example, the city of Dover is listed as a private water supplier in this list, which I, without having to look it up, I'm certain that's a public water system, if that makes sense. So I think it's just semantics, but that's what I would imagine that this list from DEQ would be, would be public water systems, because otherwise they wouldn't have a list, because.
Public by the definition of more than twenty-five years.
But probably privately owned or something like that, yeah.
Well, some of them could be, some of them could be operated by a government.
They got the city of Priest River in there.
Elkins Resort.
And I'm not sure that distinction matters too much to us, does it? Care about whether it's privately owned or whether it's operated by a government agency.
One of the big, this, most, in this regard, from like a planning department, from a planning staff standpoint, is that there's, just like we talked about with the threshold of twenty-five hundred gallons per day with a sewer system, with the water systems, if you take a shared well, you know, two users, that's completely unregulated. If that starts, if they start adding users and growing and then it grows into a public water system, so this could be like a small three or four lot minor land division, something like that, if they wanna start adding these together, once they cross that threshold and they would then become public water systems, it gets very challenging and, and it's much, it's, it's very difficult to bring that up to public water system standards, because there's certain well construction standards and everything else, so I don't know how to exactly capture that, but that is one of the concerns, again, from a plan, from, for that purpose, like a planning standpoint, so that staff understand that there may be like a small shared well or something like that, but once it crosses, once it's starting to approach that public water system threshold, then.
So it seems like we need to have a discussion of that threshold? That definition and a discussion about how the regulation of that system changes based on where the system falls relative to that person.
Right out of IDWR.
Or DEQ, I'm looking it up right now.
Swatty has it, she has the answers.
So our, our code says anything over ten connections requires, they'll, they'll ask us to go by condition, which we will go to Panhandle Health's, I need for review. I think according to the state code, it's fifteen connections.
Ten, ten connections or twenty-five.
So we still have that buffer that anything over then goes to PHD for review, doesn't matter, and if it turns into a public connection at that point, it turns into a public.
Another thing to think about is the things that might be like an art, I'm not trying to make this work, but just sometimes there can be this transient non-community where it serves an average of, there's three different types. And again, I don't know if you need to get in the weeds on this, but there's other things besides a residential dwelling, it could be an RV park or a food establishment or something like that. So it's almost like as soon as it hits this definition of, or whatever you guys want for the county, but then if it meets the definition of a public water system, which is the state definition, then it's whatever you guys, whatever, it's, that's the cutoff kind of.
Like, I can send this chapter back over to the contact I've been using at DEQ, who's been giving me information and say, hey, can you help more or less do the same review we did with sewage stuff with Panhandle Health here? And see what kind of changes that they would suggest for this chapter and then I'll send it back to you guys.
What, what do these types mean, or on those? These abbreviations?
I, I looked it up and that was five or six months ago.
Yeah, exactly.
Oh, there you go, yeah.
Yeah, so these are.
So that's just basically the store.
Yeah, that's where these different types of.
I see, and then what it's C, what is, what's a C?
Community.
And then NC is not a community?
NC, yeah, non-community, so it could, it likely meets the public water system definition, but then there's another threshold of a community system and so.
Look at what they are.
Marinas.
Exactly.
Yeah, there's marinas, there, there are.
Bible camp.
So did you, did you say something about Dover and the, the listing here was not correct?
Oh, I just was using that as an example, because on the, the title of this.
They're all, well, it says Dover and it has community.
Yeah.
Some people would think private means it's not regulated is where.
It was really more about the distinction between the private and public, because these are all public water systems.
Are they?
Even if they're privately.
They're public by DEQ's definition, but, but you might look at the one city of Dover and say, maybe that one is really truly public, because it's operated by a government agency, owned and operated by a government agency. But, you know, the, the Bishop's Marina is, is private, because it's owned and operated by Bishop's Marina, which is a private business.
And Leonard Paul Store, I mean.
Yeah, so it depends on how we're trying to, what, what kind of distinction we're trying to draw. I'm not sure that the ownership of who owns and operates the water system is terribly relevant to us. I think what's relevant is this threshold of when it becomes something that's subject to DEQ regulation. And, and understanding that and being able to direct people to go to the right place, and, and I guess, like we said with this numerous times, we can send them to you guys and you can point them in the right direction if it's, if they're in an area where there's a public water system that they need to go talk to.
Before we have more discussion on this.
So what, what are the questions you're gonna ask Jake? What's the information we're trying to get?
I'm gonna ask him to kind of vet the, the wording that we use throughout this and say, you know, is this correctly, is it correctly identifying like who's responsible for what? And are we using the right terms, whether it's a private system or a public or whatnot, so.
What we discovered.
Exactly.
So.
And I could ask if they can attend our next meeting, just see if we can have that conversation in person, if you guys have additional questions.
Is Anna Moody your contact?
I'd have to look.
She oversees the public water systems and she'd be great for this.
But if, if that, Katie might be better. Sure, either, it's gonna be the same information.
Yeah. Okay.
And then we also, I mean, without.
Anna's gonna go sterling, Katie's round service.
I had Anna and then Chris Westerman.
So Katie Baker, I think in that email I sent a few a while, I can, I can get you the contact for Katie, she oversees the engineering. For water outlets.
And then we do have at our office, it's, you know, again, it's gonna be the same information, but we do have a public drinking water specialist, Jamie Barton, I mean, she actually regulates most of the, yeah, a lot of the smaller ones, so she very familiar with Bonner County systems, and if that helps, we could, we could absolutely ask her to attend, she works our hidden office, so.
Alright, so let's, why don't we do that Jake and see if we can break this down in any way? I like, you know, I, I think, I don't, I don't see the relevance from a land use standpoint of a water system that serves a developed condominium. You're not gonna add to it.
Well, I might.
I might.
No, unlikely.
If it's approved to expand, right?
Yeah, season's a little old.
I mean, thank you for being here.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, thanks so much.
Want to talk about power plants?
It's a new growth opportunity.
It's diminishing.
Is there anything in the public services that, that we have questions for them while we have them here?
Back up to our, just chapters.
We've got utilities. Fire stations, firefighting equipment.
Drainage, you guys probably don't get involved with anything on drainage other than setbacks from your.
For motor ordinance.
Libraries, solid waste.
Helping well fairer.
Look, schools, school safety.
But you're welcome to stay.
Solid waste disposal.
You can help us work, work.
Public schools. Public safety facilities.
Are you wanting us here for something with vacation rentals, sorry?
If you guys have any input on it, it's similar to the draft we had initially sent by you guys two, three months ago. We didn't make any other changes for the PhD stuff, we, again, we've removed it from the review portion and approval and moved it to the, the backend for like suspension and suspending a permit and, yeah. So it's that same, I can pull it up if you guys wanna look at it or I can email it to you.
Uh, we, we, we had, we talked about vacation rentals again, so we, we had, we had a draft at the last meeting, and I think we were sort of okay with, except for the key element, which was occupancy and what limits are in the dispute, dispute, but the considerations were between bedrooms and occupancy, which I thought was some symmetry to how you guys look at this, and square footage. The way the draft is right now, it's based on bedrooms and there's a definition of a bedroom, four walls, a door and a dress. And that's, that's what we've kind of moved forward today. So that, that would be something you might wanna.
Yeah, it's up to you guys, however you want.
Yeah, no, definitely.
We have this component as a public, and I think we still have one person online if we wanna ask for any other public input, not.
On which?
Public services, so it sounds like we'll have it open for public comment again next meeting. Public services, so it sounds like we'll have it open for public comment again next meeting, so. With some additional small changes.
But, but we also have on the agenda was the vacation rental, so.
Absolutely.
I think the.
We would welcome your.
I, I was in your last meeting, but the meeting before, it's sort of a ha for me and maybe for others, but we had a lot of data from Jake about failed septic systems and we didn't really see any strong correlation between failed septic systems and properties that were being used in short-term rentals. So it, it wasn't apparent from that history that it's a real problem right now. So that moved me from the get ahead of it and regulate it based on occupancy to deal with it on an exception basis when there is a failure. Make sure they get fixed before they can go back to renting the property. That was just my thought process. So that's made what you guys were thinking about. And in the background, it was challenging because you guys regulate based on bedrooms and not people. So it was hard to move from that to some reasonable occupancy regulation related right back to.
Without, so. Yes, and especially without that clear link.
Yeah.
You know, which I think that's a great bit of approach of Jake.
I, I suspect, and you guys are the experts, but I suspect a lot of these homes are probably, when they're occupied, they may be over the capacity of the septic system. But what saves us is the next week they're empty. Or they're rented heavily for three months in the summer and then they sit largely vacant all winter.
It's hard to say, really.
You know.
It's, it, a lot of it, like I was explaining in the past, is if they are, you know, they can ruin their system by exceeding what the tank has the ability to settle out. So if they're just blasting it full on every weekend and it just, all the solids go in to the drain field, then that could happen on a weekend or through the summer. But, but other times, like you're saying, I think there are plenty of times where it's helpful to not to have it rest in between.
Right, but we don't see, again, we don't see historically, the data doesn't show that we have a big problem.
Yeah, which is distinct from, so the one county that does have a specific VRP ordinance with separate regulatory requirements than any other residence, which is essentially what they are, was kind of bit born out of failures that they were seeing, a direct correlation. And it was the county coming to the health to say, okay, what can we do to, you know, it's a very different starting point. And so I think where we're at now, we were collecting this data going forward. If there is a correlation, then that might give us an opportunity to revisit. Otherwise, we don't, we're just kind of guessing what, you know, you know, the, the rules say this many gallons per day per bedroom and then try to infer anything. It's just.
Well, yeah, I mean, I guess my thought was that whether or not we see a current problem, it seems like bedrooms and occupancy are pretty well related. There could be places where they put bedrooms in every room, but I think probably the exception rather than the rule. So this is the language we've come up with, which is maximum occupancy for vacation rentals should be two.
Or you guys switch it to two.
Plus two additional. And then for total, or up to a total of twenty persons, but obviously it's whichever is less. The maximum occupancy also been known by off-street parking. That's, that's what I do. And then we had a, we were concerned about having properties which may be very large and have maybe more than, more than two dwellings on it, like if it's a twenty-acre property or something. So we have this new category of high occupancy vacation permits, which is an application that would be somewhat short of a conditional use permit. And that nevertheless would have an additional permit requirement and review by the director. Well, that's kind of the way we left it at the last meeting. Understanding that, you know, there wasn't complete agreement on the commission about that. But that's kind of where we, where we were. And any input that you could give us would be, I would think that's good or.
Are, are we going to move then to vacation rentals because this is open to public comment?
Right.
So we should generally do that before we start allowing.
Well, I'm just trying to save the.
Well, I, I understand that, Mr. Chair.
Do whatever you guys need to do.
Well, you know, normally we would go right, finish going through the public services.
Oh.
While you're, while you're here, I thought it would be, well, with the, the commission's permission to at least close our discussion on public services right now and go to vacation rentals. I agreeable?
I would recommend that. Okay, so what do you think?
For the high occupancy?
Well.
Either one.
Either one, yeah.
It makes perfect sense to, to people per bedroom occupancy, just like you're saying, that's kind of a bedrooms proxy for occupancy. That makes, that makes sense.
Is the goal still, I see that it's straight, the section about PhD and the recommendation, are you guys going to eliminate that and not have us? Are you going to require them to like do anything for their septic records on your end? I see, I don't know if the application still has it, but it has like septic records and number of bedrooms on that.
But we haven't touched the application. Usually we amend those after the ordinance is changed. So with these changes, we wouldn't require any kind of sewer review or sign off for this specific use.
Okay.
With the idea that, yeah, anyway, so we've added it as, like I said, to the backend of this for, on a compliance side. So revocation, so this, right here, a failing septic system is identified by you guys, so it results in a suspension of, of the vacation rental. Once you've repaired the septic and we get a more or less, you know, okay from you guys saying it's, it's operational again, then we can lift that suspension, so.
We also have a one-year renewal. And if there are complaints or problems.
So if, and I'm just asking the question, so if you guys, someone comes to you with vacation rental permit, they're saying it's two or three bedrooms. And nobody's looking at the septic then, and then you would issue it. And then the only time someone would look at the septic is if it fails and then they'd be coming to us getting a repair permit. If we see that it's at that point more bedrooms than it was originally permitted, or maybe it never had a septic permit in the first place, then it sounds like you guys would be in the position to hold off on re, you wouldn't renew it.
We could revoke the permit.
We could revoke it, yeah.
Okay.
We could make that clear, but yeah, that, that would be grounds for revocation, that would be.
That was one thing I want, brought up way back because I just, if we do, while we're not seeing the link right now of failures, we may in the future. So it's nice to have an option.
Yeah, so that's what we had is operating a vacation rental with a suspended permit should result in a revocation. More or less if they, the septic system fails, we revoke it and then they continue to operate, or sorry, we suspend it, they continue to operate, we, we then revoke it. And then if they continue to operate, then we go through our other.
Not sure that covers exactly what, I think though, where, where you, where they've they've had a failed system and you go out, give them a repair, but then you find out that six bedrooms, seven, two. Therefore, it's way over capacity.
The repair system would be then permitted for the six bedrooms rather than two, right?
Well, if we could, sometimes we're not, if the site doesn't accommodate it, that would be the concern in that situation. Which we could let the county know, I just don't know that we would know that it's a vacation rental.
You'd have some guys call them, send a year.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right, that's the like length is how nobody would tell you.
Because otherwise, this, this is light years ahead of what any other counties, for sure. I know it's a challenging topic to try to get around, but when we just dealt with the situation, it's actually turning into a compliance issue and enforcement issue where there was failed system to the point where there was sewage running out from a vacation rental into Lake Cortland while it was occupied for weeks before the owner did anything about it.
I mean, what I see, like how to implement this would be getting some kind of quarterly report from PhD of their current failed septic systems. So where the failed septic system is the last three months, we compare that against our list of vacation rentals and then see if anything needs to be suspended.
That would.
Otherwise, we're just relying on people telling us, right?
If we had this scenario, we just had, it would turn into a permit.
Is it, is it practical to use the permitted number of bedrooms on the septic permit as the definition of how many bedrooms are in the dwelling?
I mean, they don't have a definition of a bedroom.
No, but, but what.
That's how we currently do it. It's limited based on the septic.
What it was originally permitted for.
Right.
When the septic was installed. I don't know, just a thought.
What, so say that again, Jake?
Well.
So what do we, we, I thought we just took their word for it. They have a whole discussion.
For what?
That's for the location permit, you said, you're talking about with the septic permit.
No, I'm talking about actually for the Verbo permit, the short-term rental permit. Double check the, when, when they first come in and say, I want a short-term rental permit and we're set, we're, we're determining occupancy at least in part on the number of bedrooms. Double check, well, how many bedrooms did they say were in the dwelling when they signed and built the septic system?
So you'd be cross referencing with these guys.
It should match, right?
You'd be cross referencing with these guys.
Yeah, regardless of whether it has ingress or egress or.
And you guys do that?
Well, we, so what we could.
You ask for bedroom?
As Jake, well, a septic, every septic system is designed for a specific number of bedrooms. We don't have a bedroom definition because we're not planning.
Right.
Or building, you know, it's not, it's really a building question, but we do specify the number of bedrooms.
And that determines the capacity of the septic system.
Exactly.
And that information is readily available?
We could get that information, yes. I mean, if we had a list of, which this is, process is helping with to, to get a list of the vacation rentals in Bonner County, we could, you know, go through our records and produce that.
I think there was a question about that, I mean, some months ago, about across all the ages of homes and septic systems in the county, how, how quickly can you put your hands on that information for all those dwellings? There was a question about that, I think.
Well, this is one.
That's why I asked the question, is it practical?
This is one thing I did want to mention, even with BLPs and when, when we've been reviewing some of these vacation rentals so far. Lately, the more and more we're doing this, because we've reviewed over a thou, however many, whatever number we're on for BLPs right now. It's between maybe ten, fifteen minutes to research our records up to an hour or longer. And it's really not anything having to do with just, other than the fact that we've had a lot of growth and change in this area. And so our septic records, over fifty years of records are based on the applicant, owner, parcel number, address, all the things at the time. So now people, new people to the area or whoever, they're coming with a new parcel, a new owner, a new address. Nobody knows the parent parcel, all this stuff. So what my staff and myself do when we receive something like this is we go on the county website and we look at, open up one deed at a time to see prior owners' names. Personally, in my opinion, I feel that if some applicant is coming to you or me and has a question, like some of this, in my opinion, should be on them, they're the ones who want this thing. And so if they know how to go to our public record search site and search or go on the county site to search for the deeds, just do all the stuff that we do, but they can do it on their own. It would.
Why is that, why is that important? So let's say that you had a ten-acre parcel, there's a house on a, the septic system. They subdivide that property and so there's another house going in on the, what was formerly ten-acre, now with five acre. Does it matter what was permitted for the, the other five acres?
If someone on that other five acre wanted to do a vacation rental now and we're trying to find the records to figure how many, what's it sized for? Is it a three-bedroom home, a two-bedroom home? We would need to find that record. And now if the parcel number is totally different and it's a new owner and a new address, it's just, we can probably find that record eventually. But what I'm saying is it takes a lot of time. So currently Panhandle Health's kind of been donating this time to the community, which we're happy to do. We're, we love being involved in this, but it's just in the, in the end, again, like everything, the systems are sized for a specific number of bedrooms and flows per day. And if, if someone wants to know what it's sized for, then that's how they would have to do it and.
Well, I, I saw, and Swatty and Jake, you can tell me if I'm wrong, but I looked up the application for a BLP. It asks for basically a floor plan, which would show bedrooms. So we have that, right?
Do we know that the existing floor plans are identical to the floor plans that were submitted at the time of the septic system?
That's. That's the whole thing is we have to find that initial record and I personally, in my opinion, I feel like everybody should be putting this more on the actual owner of the land to do some research on their own. They can look in their title record, their real estate transaction rec, I mean, a lot of times they have this stuff. We might spend an hour searching for something that they have right.
So what do we need to tell them that they need to give you?
Well, your application does ask for a septic permit number right now. And if they knew how to search for them.
Or. Or a rental?
Vacation rental used to, maybe it doesn't currently, I don't know.
So that, if we back up a little bit, we decided to remove Panhandle Health from the initial review of this specific use of short-term rental. We had that, we had a long discussion about if you guys want to add that back in, there's a way to solve the concern of PhD spending a lot of time in reviewing septic permits for this use of vacation rental. We could then add it as an application requirement to say, hey, bring in your approved septic, septic permit. And there it would tell us how many bedrooms we have, right? That's the right way to implement this. So if we want to go back and, and add that.
So that would be an updating mechanism to pay it current. Because my thought here is that these homes, obviously the more bedrooms, the more people they can have. And so they convert a rec room or whatever to bedrooms or whatever. So what was originally a three-bedroom house now is a five-bedroom house as, as a possibility. I'm not saying that that happens. But I think your idea, Jake, of somehow saying these need to be updated for a vacation rental is probably.
So just, just bring, have them bring in their septic permit. What about, so although, when did we, how many far back this record is, about seventies?
Fifty years, well, nineteen seventy-one.
So far on sewer.
Yeah, so how would you do that?
Yeah, or, or we'll serve letter or sign off from the sewer district. But, so are we trying to solve the sewage issue when issuing this use of vacation rentals?
So I think we're trying to, we're trying to limit occupancy based upon capacity.
Right, so, so if we're limiting occupancy based on capacity, then we'd have to say that the capacity of the short-term rentals is causing an issue with the, with the subsurface sewage what it's permitted for. That's where we did that whole analysis of, do we have short-term rentals leading towards failing septic systems? And the analysis came to no. So rather than adding additional burdens to the applicant, we, we round that back and saying, okay, well, we'll add it as a, as a backend compliance. So if there is a failing system, then we'll suspend those permits, right? Rather than adding a bunch more burden to the applicant. So if you want to add that burden on the applicant, you can, but I'd say like have some rationale.
I don't know what I call it, burden, I call it a responsibility.
Sure, burden, responsibility.
I, I hear what Jake's saying, what Dave said earlier about the need recently, amount of failed systems that we can kind of relate. When it figures out it's because of the vacation rental, that's not an issue. We're, we're creating a I don't know what you want to call it, it's not necessarily regulation, but.
So the, the state code says that we can enact reasonable regulations to protect for health, safety, welfare. So we have to find like a way to rationale like that requirement, is that a reasonable regulation for short-term rentals?
So, so I was the one who suggested it. So my thought process was, I think one of you guys raised an issue and maybe you didn't really realize you were doing it, but the question of how do we know that the building that's being applied for as a short-term rental still has the same number of bedrooms that it had when that septic system was originally permitted? And so that was a concern that popped into my head. And then I'm thinking back to all the discussion we've had about, how do we, given that we don't have building codes, how do we define the number of bedrooms? And, and how do we define a bedroom? As we came up with this, it has a window and egress or whatever, whatever it was that we decided two meetings ago. And I kind of put those two things together and said, ah, well, maybe what we really care about is how many bedrooms are on the original septic permit. Whether they have windows or ingress, egress or not, that's because, because that gets directly at the septic capacity question. And if we ended up finding a situation where somebody built a three-bedroom home twenty-five years ago, permitted a septic system for a three-bedroom home, but now they've, they've put on an addition and added two bedrooms and somehow it never got updated in the septic system. Is that a concern for us when we issue a short-term rental permit? I don't know. Maybe in light of the fact that we don't see widespread problems with septic systems on houses that are being used as short-term rentals, maybe the answer is, it's not a widespread problem. Maybe we just continue. problem, maybe we just continue with what we decided before, dealing with it on the backend when a problem becomes apparent.
If you were to ask me, would I rather add, uh, a more stringent standard upfront in a Panhandle Health review of this and limiting based on the bedroom count as, um, as determined on the, you know, septic permit, or define a bedroom, I'd go with the first route. So I think it's less problematic.
How do you go with the first route when they're on a sewer system?
Same thing, so you, you still get a will serve letter based on that capacity of, I mean.
The capacity is, well, I don't know. Expressed differently, it's probably expressed in gallons, right, or something?
Well, no, it's, it's also, they don't, they don't ask for bedroom, they ask for kitchens. So that's what Granite, Greeter did.
Is the health district, can you say, okay, well, how many bedrooms you have, this size of, what is the number you're assuming? A bedroom, the number of occupants?
They don't, they don't, they have a gallons per day, they have a table of bedrooms versus gallons per day.
Give an opening, Dave's looking.
That's defined, that's defined in state law.
Four months ago, or whenever it was, and we're doing a loop here, and we need to come up, I think, with a independent means of evaluating vacation rentals than using a long past practice of health district bedroom counts.
Well, except that, almost all the jurisdictions that I've looked at in Idaho use bedrooms that are limited to exactly what we've described here, two plus two. I'm okay with that.
It's, it's common verbiage in every single one of these that we looked at. All, all lame, it's almost verbatim.
Well, thank you.
I just wanna make it clear that from a procedural standpoint, what we see is, if someone has a failed system, um, and they come in to us, there, there's sewage on the ground or whatever's happening, they come to us for a repair permit, then we look for, or they have hopefully the existing original permit, and then we see what they're applying for now, what was the original, if there's a discrepancy with the bedroom count there, we, we can't, if it's more, say that's original is three, now they have five, we will not be issuing a repair permit, um, because they've basically violated their. Yeah, so now they're, they're applying for a new permit, and we're hoping we can meet standards, we would only issue it if it did meet current standards, if not, then we'd be doing, I don't, that's more convoluted, but, um, so there may be a way to capture to back to what you were saying, where if we had, like, oh, here's how many repairs we've done or whatever, um, we could capture that with.
Yeah, which is what we did.
Yeah.
For the initial exercise we did, we looked at.
So it, what happened, and hopefully in that case, where, now, there's six hundred miles, now it's six hundred miles, whatever, you didn't give them a repair permit, I would assume you identified the county.
Well, that's the question, we wouldn't know it's a vacation rental, really.
Wouldn't have to.
I mean, I guess unless we, I'm not sure how.
We send a monthly report of BLPs out, I'm sure sending a monthly report of failed systems can be a lot easier than looking up, you know, what you guys are doing right now.
Absolutely, that, that, that is not hard to generate at all.
And then it's on.
Really monthly, whatever frequency, um, and then also along with that, one thing that we could certainly do is anytime we run into a situation where we run into that exact problem, where we, we're not able to proceed with the, um, the permit that's meeting fully, you know, fully compliant, we could just let the county know with that as well.
And you wouldn't have to know whether it's a vacation rental or not, like, just let them know that.
Because the other possibility would be that we can proceed with a fully compliant situation, and there's, should be no concern at all, right, I mean, it's.
And then for them to get a renewal, or for them to get approval from a reinstated, they'd have to show that there was a repair.
But usually, like, if someone's gonna come in for a repair, what I saw, I remember this a few months ago, they're usually repairing it pretty quick, it's not like they let it sit around for five months.
Absolutely, yeah.
It's like a matter of weeks before they get a new system installed, right? Typically, right?
Especially if they're ready.
Especially, I know.
Yeah, absolutely.
Although, yeah.
The rules, yeah, and, and if they don't, and the system continues to fail, then it's a legal issue, which is, you know, back to these, so that, exactly, so we, we jump on those right away, really the only ones that don't get resolved right away, uh, there's some other complicating issue, or we're not able to proceed with the permit, and that's an easy to let you know on that, so, that would be easy to do.
One concern or thought I have, if we were to go ahead and, and look at that, what are, what the houses were originally permitted for, what if the house was built in the sixties? We don't have anything. So are we completely eliminating that, that property, the ability to use as a vacation rental?
The way Panhandle Health looks at that is, um, you know, people provide whatever they, and, um, a lot of times, they're going to the assessor's office, or they're providing some type of records for what the structure had in the sixties, because that in, based on Idaho's rules, is what they're vested for. So if they find documentation, it was a two-bedroom cabin in nineteen fifty-three even, it's, that's what they have a vested right for, and we're not gonna tell them they can't use that vested system, um, and I neither would you guys for a vacation rental, I would think, um, so they could still continue to use that vested for two bedrooms or whatever to fail.
That goes into the, like, a repair of an old system like that? They already have to bring it up to current standards whenever it falls?
If possible.
If it failed, yeah.
If it failed.
If it fails, yeah.
We would try, we, that's what I was wondering.
Something new every time I talk to you.
Regardless of, regardless of whether it's a vacation rental or not, so, you know, as long as people are coming, following through and getting their repair permits, we're gonna work through it either way. So, yeah, I think that's the main.
So where are we at, what are we talking about?
We're talking in circles whether or not the, the Panhandle Health needs to, you know, we need to include them on the initial review and then the determination of occupancy.
Okay.
I think there's a kind of a mixed bag of responses to that, if you guys can agree to something that's very.
I, you know, I think, I think we're okay with what we have. Okay. The only, the only comment I can, I'm thinking here as I'm looking at this, da-da-da-da-da. Okay, um, yeah, on A, maximum occupancy for the vacation rental, okay, or vacation rental, I'm talking about the parcel, vacation rental is two plus two, maximum of twenty, however, uh, the very next paragraph in the bottom page, it says twenty persons allowed per lot or parcel. So I think we need to wordsmith something there, because that, that second sentence seems, pardon?
That it exceeds twenty-nine.
Um, if the total occupancy exceeds per lot or parcel, but A, if you have two residents, you have a, you have an ADU, you have two parcels, you have two full homes on a fifteen-acre parcel, uh, four or five zones, you don't have to have, call it one, an ADU, they can hopefully be five thousand square feet.
Mm-hmm.
Would that second sentence? Would that limit it to the parcel, or are they gonna be allowed twenty per rental as A dictates?
So it's.
Per lot, per parcel, that's what.
It's the cumulative total lot, lot or parcel, so like, on your piece of property, you can have up to twenty people, once you get over twenty, then you have that other standard of the high occupancy, uh, which only has, like, it might include a hearing, or, and then it has, like, the core, more of a land evaluation. So part, part of that was to try to include, like, the big pieces of property that can accommodate, you know, multiple homes or multiple, you know, lots of parking, so, or it could be the scenario of, you know, I have two homes on a half-acre vested, you know, grandfathered lot, and, um, there's not enough parking for it, we're on lakefront edge, and so really, we're trying to, to accommodate, you know, a wide, wide range of ideas with.
So should we wordsmith A where it says maximum, ma- maximum occupancy for your vacation rental?
Well, it's a whole, a whole series of ordinances, vacation rental.
I, you know, I, I understand that.
So the permits issued per structure, not per property.
Right.
So, but then the cumulative total is per structure with a review of the entire property.
Okay, so if you have two seven-bedroom homes on one parcel.
Then you need a high occupancy.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because I could read that by reading maximum occupancy for a vacation rental, which'll be two and three, to a total of twenty persons.
This is funny, this is actually why we started reviewing this, is we go back to, like, staff had interpreted that and said, it's a cumulative total, and then, um, I said, hey, that's not how it reads, let's fix it, and I came up with this change, and, uh, and then the much bigger.
I sense after a year of implementing this and working it through, there'll be further requirements, and we can sit here in circles, you know, you need to start with something, uh, here, you were suggesting something though earlier, Jake, about two options, and I don't remember what it was.
One was based on sewer, and one was based on bedrooms.
Okay, so, did you get clarification on that?
I think the general consensus is leave it like it is.
That's kind of what I'm feeling the board, what's it gonna go, I mean.
I'm good with it. It, it, just, the question is, do we think the terms are well-defined enough so that we know that in the first sentence of A, when we say a vacation rental, we're talking about a dwelling? And I don't remember all the definitions we included.
We excluded accessory, well, I, was accessory buildings.
That's what we excluded.
Okay, alright.
And used to knowledge, we also did receive public comments, that I assume everyone had it, castor reefer.
That's true, yeah.
Yeah, and read that, and, or questions, or, scenarios that she presented.
What are you, what are you talking about, Mike, the, the public comment?
There was public comment given to us, uh, email.
What, the one?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I didn't know that was called on.
Yeah, no.
Her what-if scenarios.
Right.
And then her questions.
Well, I think the, the thrust of it, as I understood your comment, was that the vacation rental ordinance should be written in such a way to eliminate, um, excessive amounts of vacation rentals so that there would be long-term limits of the ability.
Yeah.
And I don't think that's a consideration we could make, it's under state law.
Yeah, I don't think we can even.
Well, and, and the reason I think she, she's simply done that. And.
I don't know, they have to comply with state law?
Yeah, they do, and that's, that's, that's the question, I don't know if, I don't know what they're doing for sure, but they, they're allowing one percent of all homes, only maximum one percent of all residents, let's see when it's.
For non-owner occupied short-term rental.
Right, right.
Kind of a.
So they're not prohibiting it?
They're limiting it to thirty-five.
Total thirty-five.
I, I don't.
The ordinance is.
I don't know if it's legal, I, I don't know if they've been challenged, the way I read state code is, and I've asked their planner, and I've gotten some raised eyebrows, and, and this, we, we'll see if they ever get challenged in the judicial setting.
I guess her first two questions that I'd like to directly respond to is my opinion on, for the county commissioners, she says, are, are you making policy to generate income in Bonnar County? That would be no.
No.
And, uh, are you attempting to cap the number of registered met vacation rentals to ensure the community of long-term rentals can be on the market? That's not our objective in this, for, for us here, so I just wanted to directly respond to her. We're not trying to do something here subversively to.
Yeah.
So we're, we're, we're trying to actually, uh, create a regulation here that is neighbor-friendly and community-oriented, uh, so that all people can enjoy, um, all the county.
I think I was accused a couple times of, like, just using this as a money grab, like, is this, is this just to try to gain more fee and revenue for the, for the county, and or additional tax is what I've heard, so there's no additional tax? It goes back to.
Answer to that is no.
Right, so it goes back to the state, state code, and that's, this is copy paste from the state code, the intent of four-eight-four-A, it's, I mean, I did a really in-depth analysis, a financial analysis of the software, is it feasible if we can get a higher compliance rate? All that was simply to, to, because the commissioners asked me to, like, is it a feasible thing to do, to use software to help get a higher compliance and to regulate this use, right? So that's where that kind of idea was born from, and that's where the analysis came from, but, um, and I told the commissioners upfront, so either find a way to regulate this, this is kind of the, our thought process, or get rid of the, get rid of the regulation, right? Find a way to, to get compliance on this, or stop trying to regulate it, because it's almost.
Felt the best way to regulate, or at least I felt the best way to regulate, was to garner, gather information through this process, now that we're implementing, that county commissioners are implementing with planning, to gain information, so we can make better, uh, judgment calls and long, longer decisions concerning, uh, rentals within Bonnar County.
I think all of this goes back to protecting the character of residential areas, right?
Right.
In the surrounding communities, so, uh, yeah.
And Cooney County still doesn't have a.
As far as I know, they don't.
Didn't.
Fortale does, though.
A lot of cities do, yes, there's not a lot of counties that are regulating this.
Valley County, I believe, is the only, the only one that we're aware of, is Valley County.
Interesting. Is that my call? Right.
Alright, so, uh.
We're trendsetters up there.
Have, have we exhausted, uh, our input on this vacation rental thing?
Thanks.
Yeah, again, we appreciate the opportunity to.
Any other comments on the vacation rental ordinance as it sits now?
I just appreciate the option to do something if there's a problem, to revoke it or whatever.
So I can, and I can work with you, Jake, on a mechanism for that.
That'd be great.
I, I think we.
Let's see if the commissioners approve it.
Okay, sir, yeah, let's see.
Give me a couple months.
Perfect, okay, yeah.
I'm willing to go along with this board, but I am partisan of your comments from the prosecuting attorney last time, and I think that decision will rest with county commissioners themselves as to how they manage that part of this.
Were you, were you familiar about that?
No.
I'm gonna just go Dave in real quick.
Oh, so it's in the file from last week?
Did I just see the legal opinion in there? I haven't read it all.
Yeah, if you read, read it over, Bill had some concerns that he wanted to address.
Okay.
He also told me he wouldn't come to a county commission meeting, and requested a few times, so, um, instead he.
Smart guy.
Did he give a reason?
I asked him as well.
Yeah.
Did he give a reason? Are we scary?
I think that was the exact words, Debbie's scary.
Well, I think.
Paraphrased.
Well, we're gonna have to take care of that, I mean.
So in the interest of full disclosure, so I, I take call, Bill, because no other gave it, and he basically said, uh, well, if you have an issue with what I said, in my opinion, uh, send it to me in writing, and I'll respond accordingly, so I did, I basically, the whole scenario that I went through last meeting, an email, which I can give the information. His response was a non-response. Do you see his response, Jake?
I did.
You saw him? His response was, well, he didn't respond to anything I said, and he said, uh, if you really want compliance, then you need to, uh, implore the county commissioners to give me a bigger budget, so I can hire another attorney.
Sounds, sounds.
Right, right.
That was his whole thing? Don't ask me his horses, I can't.
But, but again, I think we've worked this over, and I think we can move it ahead as is to the next level, which is what, uh, public hearing.
It's an application for, for text amendment, right? So it's an AM sixteen, I think is the designation for it now. I do have a couple other questions regarding that process with you guys, and get you, your evaluation on a couple things, but if you wanna take a, like, a ten, fifteen-minute recess, we do have your, your monthly allotment of sandwiches in there, and you're starting. So if you guys wanna take a break.
You guys should grasp them, they're really good.
Really?
If you didn't feed us, maybe we could get.
Oh, fair enough, so we can keep going, that's fine, if you guys don't wanna stop for food break.
Chair's discretion there, can we?
Sure, let's take a recess.
Yes.
What's that?
Take a five-minute recess.
Have supper with us.
Share our sandwiches.
Well, we really appreciate your, um.
No, thank you guys.
This communication and collaboration.
I'm really glad you, you stuck it out and helped wordsmith and everything else, because that.
We can.
Last month, who's taking me?
You.
Have you interacted with?
Recording.
Recording.
Here.
Did you have some?
Yeah, so. 12-216, so we're looking at amending ordinance. There's a procedure, of course, a policy or ordinance for that. It gives us the application content and we can do that. And within the application, when, so the next step for this vacation rental is to apply for this change. This change is coming from the Planning Commission, right? This was on a staff initiated change. So you guys are the applicants. So what I'd like you to do is look at 12-216 and then, which states, "You have to review the particular facts and circumstances of each proposal submitted and shall determine whether there is adequate evidence of the proposals in accordance with the general and specific objectives of the comprehensive plan." So as you review these changes that are being proposed, how are they supported or how are they in accordance with the general and specific objectives of the comprehensive plan? And this is to help staff when evaluating this. So what justification do we or do you as the Planning Commission have for the proposed changes to the vacation rental ordinance?
Well, I guess you'd start with property rights. Say that's consistent with protection of property rights. And that, I don't know if now is the time for me to make this comment. I didn't know if, I don't have this book here for some reason. Can we pull it up on the big screen?
Which one?
Uh, the vacation rental. Why am I not seeing? I, I can probably pull it up here. Something, oh, it's not coming.
No.
Where are the vacation rental?
Vacation rental code.
Okay, where do I find that?
What were you looking for now?
The vacation.
What was the order?
For the vacation.
So if you go on your, there's a link to.
To our meetings.
To these.
Today's agenda.
Today's agenda, so it's.
Yes, today's agenda, I try to keep.
On the bottom.
At the very bottom.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha. I, I do have one question that was brought up to me. So would I be looking at the most recent October 4th proposed?
There should be a 17th person.
That's it right here, yep. Currently, as it assists today, if someone comes in and gets a vacation rental, wants vacation rental for, for a tiny home, are they allowed to get a vacation rental for a tiny home?
There's nothing that prohibits them from, you're talking for like an RV dwelling unit?
Uh, no, a tiny home, in order to go ahead and use a tiny home for a vacation rental.
So there's, depends on how it's permitted. If, if it's permitted as a single-family dwelling, yes. If it's permitted as a, as a RV dwelling unit, then also yes. So the way we've written this is that we're excluding RV dwelling units, structures, tiny homes, RVs, permitted as an RV dwelling unit from being used as a short-term rental.
Okay.
Would it be considered our accessory dwelling? With accessory building?
No, so we actually have it written in, in that code provision.
And, and, and so that's where my, my, my question or concern comes, comes. Is that currently we're able to go ahead and use them? That's, that's an established right, that they can do that. But we're going to eliminate them. Where's the analysis that shows that there's a public evil or harm as it relates to public health, safety, and general welfare that we need to do that? That was the comment made to me. You probably need to come up with that analysis if we're going to eliminate them.
So this came, this change was drafted by staff, actually was a proposal by us. Because under occupancy B, it says no vacation rental, sorry, sorry, no recreational vehicle, travel trailer, or other temporary structure shall be used as a vacation rental. So I went to the board and asked the board, this was back previous board in like November, December timeframe, and I said, hey, when you guys created this RV dwelling unit, did you intend those to be used as short-term rentals? Because that code says it can be used as short-term rental, then there's this other line in the occupancy saying vacation, or sorry, recreational vehicles can't be used to, as.
Right.
In conjunction with to add additional sleeping areas. So there was this kind of a battle between the two code provisions where they didn't quite align. So I asked the board and they said, no, we, we really wanted RV dwelling units to be utilized as short-term rentals, or sorry, as long-term rentals, not short-term rentals or long-term housing solutions. So we, I know like for some time they weren't permitted and sometime they have been permitted. So right now I think we are because we're taking a more permissive approach to it, so.
And so that, that, that was the question. So, you know, today you go in for a vacation rental. Or a tiny home, or a vehicle, travel trailer, or whatever. And they're permitted to do so right now. If this goes through in this language, we're, we're taking that right, that property right away from them. Where's our analysis as it relates to public health, safety, and welfare that there's some imminent danger by allowing them to do this?
I don't think it's an imminent danger that you have to worry about.
Well, that, that analysis, so anytime, anytime we, yeah, that's because if we, if we look at regulatory technical guidelines and those, and those questions that they're asked specifically goes into everything from your economic. I think it's question number five and there are question number six. And I think if, if someone's, can go ahead and use that travel trailer right now, let's say, or vacation rental, this gets passed, this is no, you're no longer allowed to use that. That needs to be reviewed in, in, yeah, that 67-80, that checklist, we should obviously have that, perhaps include that in any, any kind of motion. And how, at least I'll come up with some, with some kind of analysis that says, oh, we shouldn't be using those. Because I haven't heard that yet, why they shouldn't be. And when we go ahead and we, and we hear that person make the comments on Idaho Manufactured Housing Association, and we're talking about park, model recreations, tiny homes and things like that, they definitely can be used for even a tiny home built on a permanent foundation. And I don't know if we're calling that an ADU, a tiny home less than 400 square feet on permanent foundation. I think we're referring to those as a recreational vehicle in current code. And so.
Even on a foundation?
I don't know, even on a foundation.
Still, it's a recreational vehicle.
I thought it currently said.
Why is it a vehicle if it's on a permanent foundation?
That's the way current code says.
The definition of an RV.
Yeah.
Or RV dwelling, I want to say.
And, and so that's the problem is if you have a tiny home, even if, even here in this pamphlet, here it says, a tiny home built on a permanent foundation and international building residential code standards is considered safer year on occupancy.
But we aren't excluding tiny homes, right?
We are because we're excluding, we're excluding travel trailers and RVs and a tiny home less than 400 square feet, which a tiny home, fine, here is, go ahead.
Matt, I think the reason behind that is that when we allow travel trailers and RVs to be used as short-term rentals, it deducts from the housing that can provide for long-term residence.
But, but that's kind of where we're, we're getting at. We, that analysis has to be in our record if we're going to go ahead and eliminate that. What's permitted now, or allowed now, I should say, not permitted, but allowed now, and take that ability away, we have to have some kind of analysis as to why it's harmful.
I didn't think we did allow RVs now. Isn't.
We, we don't have anything in there that denies that ability to use it.
Right. The way it's written right now, it's, the RV dwelling unit code says that it, so it may be used as a vacation rental subject to the standards of the vacation rental permit code, so 12-44. So we've taken that as the more permissive versus the other side.
Yeah. Well, I think what I would do, and what I think we've been trying to do is, is to make some sense out of the occupancy rules. And the reason for that is, and you can start with the property rights and their goals, objectives, and policies. Goal one is to protect private, protect property rights and enhance property values in terms of just land use planning that complies with state law relevant to county land use actions. Okay, so I think that these, this, this ordinance, as it's being modified, that's its intent, is to affect the values of neighboring properties. And you go to objectives, and under two, backed to other property should be taken into account when considering land use proposals or policies and codes. I think that applies even in a tiny home situation or RVs because if you're allowing a bunch of RVs on a piece of property, you're going to increase the occupancy and overburden the, the neighborhood. So I think, I think it all goes back to the same thing. And then it goes, if you, if you look at the policies, property rights of the applicant adjoining a nearby policy, landowners, and future generation should be considered as well as short-term and long-term consequences of the sale. I think that the property rights section is really what we're, what we're banking on.
So the code says general and specific objectives. So we don't really look over the policies, usually those lead into the objectives. So when we're evaluating this, per, per our code, it's general and specific objectives of the comp plan.
Yeah. I don't think a lot of these, excuse me, comprehensive plan.
Matt, where are you specifically in this, this document, the vacation rental document?
Um, yeah, under occupancy.
What is that, V, A, or?
Uh, what is that? C three.
C three?
I believe that's.
Oh, yeah, occupancy, okay.
So there's, there's two changes. There's, there's the change at the very end to 12-496, and then there's the occupancy change in the code section you just referenced. Yeah, oh, sorry, I can share it. Thank you, Swell.
I, I guess, I, I understand what you're saying, Alan, that you feel that by allowing RVs to be used as vacation rental permits, rentals includes on property rights of neighbors, right, tracking, okay? But however, they're allowed to exist. And so the question then becomes, if it's used for any kind of rental, 30-day rental or seven-day rental, it's already going to exist. Not that I disagree that we shouldn't eliminate them.
I think a long-term rental is a different animal. I think you've got people who are there, they're living there for some period of time as opposed to people who are there for a week.
Sure.
And maybe, you know, they have all kinds of different activities than you might with a long-term rental.
Well, and, and, well, as long as you, you feel that way, you know, in any kind of motion, I think it, it needs to be stated that some kind of analysis is done and.
I think that's part of the findings of fact, I think.
Well, it needs to be, right. I mean, we're getting more pressure to put specificity, specificity into it. Right. Because when we get to that, when we get to the housing component, granted, this is vacation rentals. In the housing component, you know, we're instructed through LUPA that we need to encourage all types of housing for all income levels. Granted, vacation rental permits are, they're different, strange little beasts, I, I get that. I, I, I just, just have, I have a little bit of heartburn when something is allowed today and we're going to take that away, that we have to have really good reasons.
And that is specifically the recreation vehicle dwelling?
Um, yeah, because I don't know how we define recreational vehicle. I thought it was tiny homes and things like that included.
I, I don't know that that's, what that is.
This is the code provision he's talking about. So under 12-496A5, currently reads it may be used as a vacation rental, or this is under RV dwelling unit.
Oh.
So may be used as a vacation rental, so, subject to the standards of the 12-44, which is what we've been talking about modifying. So this change would say it may not be used in vacation rental, to make it more specific.
Then you strike this sentence, then, to accommodate that.
Or just leave it the way it is.
Amen.
Right, so we just don't, don't propose the changes to 496. Then I would say you'd have to modify the occupancy standard at the top to say, to get rid of the prohibition on our, in RV dwelling units.
I don't think that's necessary. State law allows us to use reasonable restrictions. I think it's a reasonable restriction that people can't bring a bunch of RVs onto their property if they're using vacation rentals.
Well, the, this code tells you you can only have up to two per property. So it's not like it's, we're not talking an RV park.
But that's for permanent housing, up to two.
Right.
So the short term.
So this, I think this regulation still applies. You can only put two on your property.
Says recreational vehicles.
If they have full.
Regardless of what they use.
Full hookups.
Yeah.
You, you can permit one if you have less than an acre, or up, you know, up to two if you have more than an acre. There's a threshold of one acre, right? So there's this idea that, and this, this isn't born in LUPA, there's nothing that permits or requires us to have RVs as dwelling units additional to single-family dwellings. So this was a provision added to the code back in sometime in the last five years, I know that. We got into it in those times there, that we wanted additional housing sources, so RV dwelling units. There was, there used to be like some permissions in the code and talking about temporary housing and seasonal and whatnot.
Yeah.
And they said, let's define it more specific, invest it as a property right. So this is how, that's how it was born, so.
I guess I'm confused, are we looking at 3B here, under occupancy? So didn't recreational vehicle, travel trailer, wasn't that in it originally?
Yes.
So how are we taking away something? Because it already said no recreational vehicle, travel trailer.
Because we, we never had this, we never had a.
This wasn't.
Yeah, we did. Am I wrong?
So the way it reads now is you can't use an RV to establish a dense, like additional occupancy. So you could read it in two different ways. You can read it that you can't add, okay, I have a three-bedroom home and an RV, so now I'm going to have four bedrooms, right? So this was a copy paste stolen from City of Coeur d'Alene's code, that's how it got in there. If you look at their code, that's exactly how it reads, is how we have it currently drafted, not, not our changes, but the draft of, you know, the current ordinance.
Right, I'm talking about what's crossed out.
Yeah.
Wasn't that in our current, or isn't that in our current ordinance, what's crossed out?
Correct.
So I, I still, yes, I'm confused because I still don't understand how we're taking away something that we already didn't allow.
Well, that's the problem, because under RV dwelling unit, it says you can, like I said, th- this was a staff initiated change, this was back when we first started with this. Staff came and said, hey, okay, well, you have two different conflicting code sections. I went to the board and said, board, what do you guys intend with this? They're, they're somewhat conflicting here. The board said, RV dwelling units weren't supposed to be used as, as short-term rentals, they're supposed to be used as long-term housing. So that's where this change came from. So, but yes, right now, I think we've been permitting them for short-term rentals because there is a line here that says they can be.
When was this, on the screen, when was number five changed?
This, this is just the draft.
That's proposed to be.
This is proposed.
But it's to make it consistent with the other code.
Okay.
Under occupancy.
I, I, if, the original question was, how do we justify, I think we justify it the same way you justify the entire short-term rental ordinance, current and opposed. And the, the, the reasons for it are, we've been talking about, which is to put reasonable restrictions on the short-term rentals so that maintain the integrity of the neighborhoods. That's been, that's been the motivation. And I think if you go back, pull up the beginning of the ordinance that we currently have, Jake, you'll see that, that precise language, first part of that, pre-able or with the first section.
Right. Where, you want to justify the change based on the intent from state code and the intent inside 44.
But it specifically says in there, you know.
Property values and his property values. So we, we need to come up with an analysis that says that if we do allow that, it will lessen values. Where's that analysis at, is my guess, question.
I, I do have to say that we don't have that many. Like, it's a pretty small number of RV dwelling units or RVs being permitted as short-term rentals. It's not like a systemic problem where.
Well, we don't know, since we haven't, you know, since 70% of them, I mean, it couldn't.
Don't tell us that they're not.
That's true.
Probably not.
You know, you.
You're right, Jake.
You'll implement this and then you'll find out if someone takes issue. Got to start somewhere. I doubt very much.
We started somewhere back in 2018.
Yeah, well, I doubt very much that this document that we're going to approve here or recommend to the commission is, is going to remain stone for very long. So it'll be amended and changed, even by the commissioner, perhaps.
Yeah. We're just making a recommendation.
Once we start getting data.
I just think we need to, we're getting, losing traction here, and we just think they kind of move this forward with the best product that we can.
Do you have, do you have a problem with being able to write some, when is a fact that concludes? So as long as we're talking about.
Justifying short-term ordinance, short-term rental ordinance?
Somebody did, somebody did it in 2018.
Right. Yep, they did. So if, if the changes are being proposed by the Planning Commission, I just thought it would be a really, it'd be a much str- like stronger argument to have some analysis done of the goals and policies from you guys to say, okay, these, these, sorry, not goals and policies, the goals and objectives, these specific goals and these specific objectives support these changes. So you guys wrote those goals.
I gave you three, up top of them, yeah.
Right, so those, that's the, I mean, we have.
Go back and look at the housing component, see what it says there. I mean, you know, as long as we're talking about.
Some of them don't apply because it's short-term.
Thank you.
Healthy population probably doesn't apply.
The housing component is simply provided an environment that enables opportunities for diverse housing needs.
School facilities don't apply.
Right.
As long as we're talking about eliminating things from vacation rentals to the, we're also eliminating bunkhouse situations, right?
Yeah.
It depends on how a bunkhouse is permitted. If it's permitted as an ADU, then no. And oftentimes they are permitted as an ADU.
I thought that was how we added accessory building.
No, that's, accessory buildings are non-habitable. So that's like a shop or a barn or a garden shed.
So we were trying to prevent that from being, as bunkhouse.
Depends, if, if someone finds a bunkhouse as an ADU and it's a dwelling unit, an accessory dwelling unit, then yes, they, they will be able to do, use it as for a short-term rental. This gets into the stickiness and not having building codes. I, I know I keep pounding that drum, but it's hard when we're, they're saying, okay, this is a dwelling, and how do we verify all the components of an actual dwelling?
And my concern, one concern is that tiny home is considered a recreational vehicle.
Yep, it is an ARK, too.
And.
If somebody wants to put a tiny home on a, on a, on a piece of parcel and call it a.
Kind of the, the deficiency apartment, right?
If somebody wants to put a tiny home on a piece of parcel and call it a single-family home, then they can. It doesn't, just because it's also permitted as an RV dwelling unit, doesn't prohibit it from being used as a single-family dwelling unit.
We, we've permitted like an, like an RV or a tiny home as their single-family dwelling, right?
If, that's, because it, it really, what we are trying to do is really regulate the density of residences that they can have on a single piece of parcel, right? It doesn't matter what they build it out of or what sort of a living unit it is. That's not the concern since we don't have building codes.
So I, I'm not sure what we're doing here. So are we, we going to, you want us to go through and, and write the, the analysis of consistency with the comprehensive plan?
So I just wanted to send a general idea. I mean, you guys are pretty familiar with the goals and policies, the goals and objectives of the comp plan. So either, we can either do that as a group or if you guys want to send me emails as to what you think or how it's supported from the Planning Commission's point of view, that would really help in, in our analysis of this.
Oh, I, I think, you know, as I said, I want to repeat to myself, but I think property rights are, is the primary one. I mean, schools and facilities doesn't apply, economic development probably doesn't apply, natural resources doesn't apply, public services doesn't apply, pardon me?
Economic development would probably apply, right?
I'm sorry?
Economic development would probably apply.
It supports the tourism industry, right?
Economic development would probably apply.
Recreation would apply, I guess.
Well, it does, I was looking at the specific goals, objectives, and policies, and I don't know that it fits with any of those specific, as we've enumerated them. But yeah, I mean, I think that's true. Because it don't apply doesn't mean it's not consistent, right?
Right.
So going to Matt's point, if the goal of the economic development is to support and encourage economic development, by eliminating that as a property right, then does that, is it more or less not supported by that goal?
So Matt, you're, you're suggesting that the last sentence in section two there.
I, I, I just don't know. I, I'm perplexed.
No, I think you are, and I'm, I'm thinking, why should that be, be the issue? Because I'm, I'm back to what Jake was saying, in this community, in this county, recreational vehicle dwellings are, I mean, used as a, as a vacation rental is not a big issue. So I don't, I don't see the harm in removing that sentence. And first of all, if someone's living in a permitted recreational vehicle as a dwelling, are they really in the rental business?
No, it wouldn't apply.
Right, so.
It just wouldn't apply to that.
I just, I don't see the need for this. Striking the last sentence, no structure permitted it. They can use it as a vacation rental, but the fact is, probably not going to.
I, I.
Then you have the, the disparity here, so.
I really question whether this is going to be an issue, whether the person that brought this up with Matt may, you know, if they have skin in the game, outstanding become a problem.
Every, every property has the, the ability to put an RV dwelling in it, right? Well, I, I guess they have the right to, I don't know if it's feasible on every piece of land out there, but.
If it's a permanent.
That's the kind of county we want, so everybody's got an RV unit they rent out?
Not necessarily. It's up to you guys on what you guys want to do here, so I'm, I'm finding the direction.
I'm happy with the way it is, I think. And I, I kind of agree with Alan's comments about why, why it's in conformance with the comp plan. And then I guess the last thing I'd say is, I like your idea of having to send you emails
It's fine, yeah.
The goals and objectives. Support, support this, it's probably the best, most efficient way to do that, I think.
I kind of sprung this out, you guys, I probably should have mentioned this last time. Came about in some thinking on like how to run the application, it's like, well, it's not really my application, it's really the Planning Commission's proposal, right? All this came about from you guys' conversation, your want and, and request from staff to draft this stuff for you, so I thought it would be a good opportunity to have you guys go back to the goals and, and objectives and say, okay, how is this change supported based on the, the goals and objectives we, you know, we adopted back in December?
So, okay, I think we can do that. I'd be happy to do that. That mean we'll be presenting it to the commissioners.
No, staff will still process the application, so I, I would invite you guys, when we get to that hearing to the board, that anybody can show up if you like.
All right, anything else on this?
Nope, that's all I got.
Let's finish public services, I think we can do that fairly quickly.
I saved in there a version five, just a heads up, that's for our next meeting.
You're going to open up?
Yeah, I don't know. I go back, I'm going to go back.
Yeah, the PDF tends to work better, I think, for you guys, because it's a smaller file.
It says 1017?
Yeah. There should be a PDF version of the 1017.
Okay, so where we left off is Jake is going to submit the water, water suppliers, section to EQ, I guess. So that would move, when we were on power plants, did anybody have any suggestions on power plants, or is it find a way? So that would move, when we were on power plants, did anybody have any suggestions on power plants or is it fine the way it is? Went through this last time.
Yeah.
Fire stations, firefighting equipment.
I can't remember. Have we already taken a bunch of stuff out of this chapter?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yes.
Cause I'm looking at it, going at sixty-seven pages. What was it to start with?
Well, lots. We added a lot of maps is what we did. I think two-thirds of this is now just maps.
Was I opened it? I thought, I thought this was the one with splash.
Yeah, it's only like sixteen pages.
I see. Okay. Yeah. It's all these.
All right. So anybody have any problems with the fire station firefighting? You know, we put, we put in there the fire districts, the appendix. I thought was helpful. Came up in the commissioners meeting today. Or no, was that, I guess that was in the chat.
What was it?
Fire districts.
Oh, right. It did.
Thought you were just going to refer him to the, the comp plan.
I should have. It's a lot of answers in here.
All right. So, and no, if no comments on the, uh, comp plan, I mean, on the firefighting, health and welfare, or no drainage, I guess. Drainage, we decided last time that, uh, put the code in here.
So, I'm just reading. Protect, okay. Purposes to protect property, surface water and groundwater against.
The health and welfare facilities. Worked on this last time. Do you have any other thoughts?
Those four agencies are the, under EMS are the ones in addition to Bonner County EMS, but ABMS, MOUs and research of that.
I got that list directly from the EMS director, Chief Lindsay. And then we have a map that shows the different areas that those, in which those guys operate.
It's in the appendix. And then, uh,
Send them the maps.
Libraries. We've got the library districts as well as. And we have a list of solid waste disposals. I think we've, we've corrected, we've eliminated the ones that actually didn't exist anymore.
I correct that in here. I mean, I'm going to put a thing, because I did, I did reach out to, um, Melissa and it might've not got updated in my, I, I lost a draft of this, like I said. So I'll make a note and I'll go back to that email and verify. Pretty sure I.
Well, this is different. This is different than the one we had.
Is it?
Yeah, because we had, we had a couple in, in Priest Lake that aren't, or the Priest Lake area that were modular right there.
You know what?
And weren't there anymore. So.
What are you looking at?
Solid waste.
Oh, okay.
Only one they have listed is Dickinson, which is right.
Under eight point two.
Does it say fire safety?
Eight point two. Now, this is a documented comp plan that's going to have a date on it. And maybe the county will update it five years from now. So, which is a list of, of current improvements. What's current?
Oh.
Should we just say as of 2023, the list of improvements is a la la? It says current, so sorry, fix the stuff in 2027. Is it, oh. It's already done or well, aren't they, weren't they?
That'd be a good idea.
Where are you looking?
Let's put it, let's put twenty twenty-three.
Current list of future plans.
Current, current is somewhat.
Current is.
So if we say improvement plans as of the.
Yeah.
Or the date of this document or something. I don't.
I, I can put the date that I got that email to be really specific and accurate.
Yeah. Right. That'd be a good reference, like we've done with other things.
And then anything else? All right. Public schools, I think that's exactly what we described.
Refer back to the other.
Public safety facilities.
Uh, I think we were fine with this one. This was drafted again with, um, Quan Howard and just updated.
All right. So if that's been, that's the case, then, uh.
And I have, I, I had worked on a lot of, a lot of the bibliography and I lost it. So I'll get it all updated and put in there.
All right. So then let's set this for a continued, uh, public workshop for next time.
Yep. Just to get that last final stuff with the water section in chapter three.
Right.
And we do have one person online if we want to ask for the public comment.
Okay. We do?
She's got her hand up too.
Uh, yes, we have someone on the line that wants to make a comment about public services.
Go ahead Suzanne.
Andrea.
You're, you're muted on your end.
Hello? Yeah. She sometimes, she used to have to walk outside on her porch.
Yeah. Sounds like Suzanne.
Oh, okay. Go to the porch.
I'm unmuted. No, I don't need to walk outside. Thank you.
Go to the porch.
Okay. I've already listened to all the comments about my letter. So if we'd like to continue. Um, so when I had sent in the letter, I had since talked to Commissioner Omot and also to, um, Commissioner, um, Lynn Scott in regards to, Lynn Scott in regards to the, um, proposals that I had. And in fact, I was updated and told that the state ordinance, as pointed out by Jake, does not allow to have a denial for a homeowner to have a vacation rental. And so I just wanted to point out that in fact, when I wrote that, I did not have that information. I'm kind of surprised that you can in fact revoke them for a year if you can't deny them, but that's just an idea. Um, I still think it's going to be really hard to regulate how many people are in a house or not in a house, or how many cars are parked there or not parked there. But then again, that's kind of up to you and, and your current commission. We came about doing all of this due to the fact that the high cost of rentals and the affordable housing that's just not available. And so that's where we actually started this entire process. And as you know, when you look through Facebook, people are trying to get rentals and it's just insane, the prices. And so that's really where vacation rental started. But I do appreciate that I was updated from, um, Commissioner Omot in regards to the fact that it cannot be capped. We have to allow everybody and anybody who wants a vacation rental to in fact have it, which is unfortunate. But that now rests in your hands. But thank you so much.
It's a good letter.
Thank you.
Do you have any comments on the public services component?
Yeah, we're, we're on the public services. If you have a comment on that, we'd be glad to hear it.
Um, unless I misread, I didn't think that the public had a comment on public services. So I did not prepare anything, but thank you.
Well, it's going to be on the agenda next time too. So you want to take a look at it? We'll, we'll be receiving comments next time.
Terrific. Thank you so much.
All right. So, um, we're going to set this for, for, uh, for the public comment workshop.
Yeah. So one more, I think we should get a final draft by the end of the next workshop. If I can finalize that chapter, was it chapter two?
Then we can sort of rehearing.
And then we'll get it scheduled for a hearing after that. It should be, it takes about a month from the time we finalize it before we get to a hearing.
All right. So, uh. Did we have, we have natural resources on the.
Yes, we do. We have some updates.
You have some updates.
Yeah.
So Swadi, Swadi, or I guess Swadi did it. Yeah, okay. So, yeah, let's go, let's move to, uh, public comments. This moved, I'm getting my sheet. Um, let's move to the natural resources.
Section, it's all word.
Yeah. Which one do we do? Version eleven, eighteen?
Oh, I am up.
One that was probably saved last night.
Okay, that's, yeah.
It says in progress.
Yes.
Yeah.
So Swadi, why don't you to, uh, why don't you go through what you, what you changed?
Yeah. So. Um, I can, I can grab a line. So. In this current draft, I, basically the introduction part is almost the same, except that I added the second, second paragraph, which talks about the farm and protection policy, farmland protection policy act. Because that is where the soil designations come from. And from there we go into section three point one, which is, which talks about the act and where the designations come from again. Sorry.
You're fine.
Sorry, I'll, I'll keep it slow. So section three point one is new and the second paragraph of introduction is new.
That, that act, oh, defined in farmlands.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Then you've got the prime farmland, unique farmland. Yeah, but she then concludes that there isn't any. I hadn't, I hadn't seen that designation, unique farmland.
It, it should come from NRCS, but NRCS hasn't designated unique farmlands. That's why, that's why we don't have those for Bonner County. We only have prime farmlands.
Okay.
Is unique a level above prime somehow?
It's below. It's one below.
But we don't have any, so we don't have to worry about it. All right. So, uh, then you just quoted the CFR?
Yeah. So then in section three point two is prime, prime farmland soils is basically, most of it is, is what the old component used to say about prime farmland soils. And then the NRCS designations of prime farmland soils.
And notice it said prime farmland, if you're irrigated, it states it twice.
Oh, it should be, one of them is drained.
Oh, it's drained.
Yeah, one of them is drained.
Okay. Well, you've got, you've got it drained. Oh, so that's, so it's one of this if drained, one of drained and protected for flooding?
Yeah. So, so, so the latest designation that NRCS gave us is four of these categories.
All right.
And then they provided us a map as well, which is the, in the appendix, they provided us the types of soils, a table for the types of soils that are designated as four of these categories. Those tables are in the appendix as well. And then some general idea of how much, what, they are approximately fifteen percent of the total privately owned land is pri- all areas are prime farmland. So that's in the.
Is this, is this consistent with the agricultural?
Um.
The, the data seems to be, I mean, I haven't looked at the numbers, but she took the data about acreage. Remember, we took all the soils discussion out of that component and decided we would put it here.
Yeah.
That's correct.
So this number that we have, the total acreage of privately owned land, this comes from our, uh, research that we did for the housing component.
Right.
And where, where did, where did the, uh, last paragraph, where did that come from?
This, this comes from, um, uh, census of agriculture. This, this was used in the agricultural component as well.
Swadi, back up just a little bit, we have that, your little comment there about one through a prime farm is used for crops and pasture.
Yeah.
Where'd that come from?
I have no idea. This was in the old component. I did not delete it, but we have no validity of.
Yeah, no, we, yeah.
I don't think we can use it.
I agree.
Yeah. You want to strike it?
I just, yeah, I just wanted to leave it for you guys to make a decision on whether we want to strike it or keep it.
Um, hi, Straken.
Well, can that be, if it's unnecessary or could it be perfected with the present, given to the numbers above, according to four hundred thirty-six thousand and then fifty percent? Doesn't that aim toward that summary statement of some portion is prime, is used for crops?
Well, that one.
Department of Ag has those numbers, I believe. They reported out to the Department of Ag how much is prop and how much is pasture and how much is.
But do they do that based on soil type?
I don't know. Probably not.
I'm not sure this is really, yeah, soils.
Yeah. I mean, again, what's it going to be too?
Correct.
Get rid of it.
So then.
That, that figure of, um, of all privately owned land in Barn County, nearly sixty, fifteen percent, sixty-five thousand, five hundred five, fifteen acres, seeing soil classified as all areas of prime farm land. Where'd that figure come from?
That came from NRCS and the GIA's data that they gave us.
Yeah, NRCS has that. Okay.
Then this, this last paragraph that is all in red, it's from an old conversation that Bonner County had like twenty years ago with somebody. There is no record of that. There is no validity of that. I don't know.
I don't know who Barn County.
I would take it out.
Yeah, I, I'd inject it to a number of the way things are worded anyway, like the readings, the loss of some prime farmland to urban uses.
Whoa.
Ranchettes.
And the much.
And then ten and five and twenty acre, five and ten acre ranchettes.
Contributed to Bonner County's noxious weeds.
Highlighted it through a smaller area. Verifiable.
Yeah.
So, but it's, we're striking that paragraph entirely.
Yeah, it's, yeah. There's, there's things in there that don't make any. Give you five acre, five acre lot, but you've got to keep a weed free. Already, it's already in accordance with the number, make care of the weeds. Is a tiny home a ranchette?
A ranchette?
I believe it's on ten acres.
Yeah. There you go.
If farmland of statewide importance.
Only if it's modular.
So farmland of statewide importance, again, Matt, uh, did a lot of research there and it turns out that neither ISDN or any of the other agencies, uh, state agencies, they could verify that it has been adopted legally or, or designated legally, farmland of statewide importance. And that is basically what it says. The data that NRCS gave us, they still showed farmland of statewide importance. I'm not sure how. But again, we have no evidence that it was done legally or.
So even though it doesn't exist, I think that we need, we do explain why.
Yeah, I, I, I've explained that in these three paragraphs here, why. And I have still included the data that came from NRCS in the, in the appendix and left them there. If somebody wants to refer to it. If somebody wants to refer to it. Non-prime farmland, in the old component, we had a huge list of all the soils that, that are called non-prime farmland. I don't know if it makes a difference to put that list in because. The current list that NRCS gave us, the current data that NRCS gave us, they said, everything that is non, not, that, that is not prime farmland and that is not farmland of statewide importance is non-prime farmland. That's all they said.
So for our purposes, if it's non-prime farmland, it's everything else.
Right.
But you see, and my concern there is, they're considering prime farmland and farmland of statewide importance is all prime farmland. Idaho has not adopted that.
It's, it's not. No.
It's not?
No, it's not. Yeah. Now, there is the, different, completely different, like farmland of statewide importance and not, and prime farmland are completely different categories and have to be designated separately.
So, again, maybe the, the comment, maybe, maybe that, maybe we should take farmland of statewide importance out of this paragraph.
I think we should mention it here because NRCS does show it in their map, but we need to, we need to state as to why it cannot be used in our decision making. Process.
It hasn't been adopted by the state?
And we say that, but then I, I, three point four.
Yeah, right.
So you think it's, it should be in both?
No, non-prime farmland is, is, it's just a definition of what non-prime farmland is. It's, it's up to. It's up to the governing body to decide what, how to use this in the, in the ordinances or not use it in the ordinances, right?
So basically, so there's nothing classified as farmland of statewide importance, there's nothing, so.
It's interesting that they say that. So all soils, basically, they don't use that word, but all soils not designated as prime farmland are still suited for crop production and pasture.
Actually, they didn't say that. This is the, this is the part that came from the old component.
Okay, okay. Cause I would question that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have, I, again, I don't know where this came from and I don't, cannot verify to the authenticity of this.
Why don't we take that out?
Okay.
I mean, I'm not even sure, some of it, probably doesn't even deserve to be called farmland. Well, and maybe here, this is where we should talk about soils. I mean, it's other soils, right? It's. It's really what we're talking about.
That comes from.
These soils?
Yeah, old, old railroad clearing. Old, 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 old logging projects becoming dairy farms over time and now having gone back to woodlots again.
So would you just get rid, completely get rid of section three, four?
You know, I'm not sure, because I don't think we can say. Anything definitive about the capacity or the capability of those non-prime foreland soils as a, as a universe. You know, some of them probably are suitable for crop production and, and others probably not. So since we can't say anything about it, I'm not sure it adds anything to put it in there.
Beyond the first sentence, I think we could strike three point four.
Yeah, if you wanted to include the, the first sentence, just to say, you know, it's.
It knows it's non-prime.
It's non-prime.
If it's not of statewide importance, if it's not prime farmland, then it's non-prime.
Yeah.
Yeah, why? Why have it even there saying that?
Because, because it shows up on the map that was provided by NRCS.
Oh, it's non-prime farmland. Oh, okay.
And also, it gives us something to call it.
Okay, but I, the sentence after that about however the steepness and.
Yeah.
No, that's what I'm saying. Beyond the first sentence, strike the holes, strike.
I agree, so let's do that. Let's strike the, everything except for the first sentence. The land capability classification.
So this section, this was part of the land capability, capability classification, there was a paragraph about it in the, in the old component. But it was in, in a lot of detail. I shortened it down to these three, four sentences and included the rest of the information in the appendix. Which basically talks about, so even the prime farmland soils, they can be classified in different classes and subclasses, which talks about class one. Two, three, four, five, and they have different kind of, each class has different kind of limitations, even on prime farmland soils. That, just because it's a prime farmland soil doesn't mean it's going to be productive for certain kind of crops or any crops or just that. And those, those limitations are, are then listed in the appendix of this component.
That, look under all the classifications of soil, the engineering index applies to all of them. So it'll tell you whether roads can, should be, are going to be road or they're hard to build or something, housing, housing is accepting. That's one of the engineer's criteria. That's where really, all this whole discussion boils down to land capability classifications. That, what NRCS did was say what uses are better to use in those type of soil or. Yeah, well, they're, they're all, they never come out and say, don't do this here. They say it's got low possibility of this, high possibility of erosion or something like that. All the way to chemical properties, soil water features and so forth, so. And this is the. This, in my mind, is where regulation come in as a result of looking at the classifications.
Okay, so would you change any of this?
Well, I, I don't think so. Then we need to look back at the goals again and do this at the moment and see if that's where it boils down to.
Yeah, that map that you're referring to where it shows prime statewide and non-prime, is that in the append, in the appendix now?
It's in the appendix, yeah.
Let's see if I can.
Yeah.
Ask some for assistance on deciphering what it means, because I remember looking at that map before. And I can't make heads or tails of those colors.
It's a.
I can't, and I can't make it any big, oh, there you go.
I, one thing I haven't done, I'm very familiar with the nineteen eighty-three soils document, how to use it. They can tell you from. Being a consultant in the county, land agent consultant back in the nineties. Client would come in with a new piece of property, the very first thing we do is pull up that soil survey and say, well, here it is, we find their property and interview with them. It says here that, boy, this is going to be a difficult one to put roads through this area of this type of soil. Oh, well, then we'll put the road over here, something like that. It's very useful. I don't know what the present online thing from NRCS does. Haven't delved into it that much to, and all this, I'm saying, you know, if the code, we're going to rely on this information that NRCS has provided. We have to say so.
Well, no, see those top, that one and that one looks so close together. Yeah, and then I looked at that and then tried to draw.
Worked with thirty years, I am down here.
All this area is mostly red and that's not prime farmland.
What is it?
Not prime farmland is red. That's the first, the first box here and all of this in this area and a lot of it is all, all.
So, all areas prime farmland is which category?
The green, which is all this down.
NRCS.
I mean, maybe I can ask her to scroll down a little.
Last year, they gave us this map last year.
Yeah, no, as, as I'm saying, it. If, if we're going to lean on land capability classifications, somehow the body to encode or say it follows. Criteria parameters are there, then I want to make sure that that's what's being trained in the present day online soils. I can't imagine it's not, but I just haven't been there before.
Are these, um. These referenced, um.
And that's out of the old book, right?
No, it's the new map that NRCS.
So all these descriptions go with the new mapping?
Yeah, that's what they gave us last year.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Red.
That's red.
So what is that?
So under three point six, Swati, alright, do we have?
Oh, three point six is, yeah. I still have to. I still have to work on it. At nine o'clock, I gave up on it.
Okay. So like this color right here and that color right there, I think this is the red.
Yep, that's the red.
And red equals what?
Not prime farmland.
Okay, and what does blue mean?
Which blue color turquoise?
Yeah, which blue?
Prime farmland if drained.
Okay, let's go back down. Now, what color is that? And what is that?
The green?
All areas are prime farmland.
We got prime farmland, but the blue is the. I'm reading that map right. Man, it gets so hard.
If drained. Yeah, I think you're right.
I have a GIES, I have a GIES file for this. I will produce a better map from the information they gave me.
Okay.
Yeah.
Rock come down, you can point the color in the end.
Yeah.
Good luck draining. Thanks, White.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So going back to.
It'd be helpful if they drew a boundary around Lake Ponderay at least.
So you're right, so it's always white or something, but you at least have the outline that you recognize.
You're right. They should be saying that city is sample.
It is. I think they have it as blue.
Yeah, it is. If drained, right, it's prime farmland.
No, I, okay, the soil is.
The soil is. We're not farming. We don't have, no, right? But that's what's confusing this whole thing. Designating something as a certain soil type like prime doesn't mean it has to be a farm.
Right.
You know, there's, there's.
We're trying to conserve it if its use was once farmland.
Are we trying to conserve it? It's gone. And how? That's the bottom line here.
Well, we, we discussed this a long, we discussed this a long time ago, that we weren't, we were going to get away from soil.
I mean, I know there's a lot of. No dirt?
Are you kidding me?
Alright, so, hey guys, back on track.
They're too busy knocking trees down and building railroads.
Okay, hey, guys. Alright, so.
I'll, I'll work on this next.
Swati, you still have some work to do on three point six?
Yes.
And, um, and other than that, I think we're pretty good. I, okay, are we going wildlife?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, so.
Wildlife.
Wildlife. You did take out a lot of stuff in wildlife, I know that.
Yeah, so in wildlife, the only thing we were left with after the commission had taken out everything. Was this introduction, which I kept as it is. I haven't changed anything in there. And then everything that, that is at the end of this component in red is what was left for critical wildlife habitat. And let me, let me go over the entire section one by one, so we know what we have done here. So four point one, general overview introduction hasn't changed from the last, from the last time the component, the commission worked on this component. Then endangered and threatened species, I have, here I talk about US Fish and Wildlife Service and. The designations that come from US Fish and Wildlife Service. Some species that they have listed as. Threatened and endangered that have been observed in Bonner County.
No, they're endangered.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But they've been seen in Bonner County.
They have, so, so there's, it's important to understand that just because. Endangered or threatened species have been observed in Bonner County doesn't mean Bonner County is a critical wildlife habitat for these species. The US Fish and Wildlife Service designate, designates certain areas as critical wildlife habitat. Even if, even if. This hap, these species can be seen in other parts. Of US.
Just out of curiosity, what does the DPS mean on the Southern Mountain Caribou?
I am not sure. It was just in the whole, the entire name, yeah. It was in the entire name. I've, I've, I've not changed the terms that they have used. Now Idaho Fish and Game, according to the state code, they do have the ability to designate or classify species as threatened or endangered for the state of Idaho. But they do not have the ability to designate areas as critical wildlife habitat. That designation comes specifically from US Fish and Wildlife Service. And here I basically have noted the code sections that gives the Fish and Game Commission the, the, not the Fish and Game Department, but the Fish and Game Commission, the ability to. Designate or classify wildlife as threatened or endangered. And this is what I found from their website, this whole list. Of the endangered and threatened species that they have classified for the state of Idaho.
Well, so, interesting, they've got endangered. Cocaine and then, and in Bonner County, they don't have cocaine. I don't think cocaine is endangered. They can't catch them, but. They certainly exist in, right, in Bonner County.
So for the, they have some maps on their website that show where these species are found or observed. And the only three species of these endangered and threatened is caribou, bull trout and Canada lynx that have been observed in Bonner County. Again, not a critical wildlife habitat for, for these species. As defined by US Fish and Wildlife, only observed in Bonner County according to Idaho Fish and Game Commission.
I wonder why they have cocaine.
It, it's possible that it may be, may be endangered or threatened in the southern portion of Idaho. Most of these were in the southern portion of Idaho, not in the northern area.
Maybe we should say, threatened in the state of Idaho, not necessarily in Bonner County.
Oh, well, I think the last portion of that specifies that.
Okay, well. I mean, if somebody was looking at it like me and I saw that cocaine and that. Falling species are bound in Bonner County.
And Canada lynx is actually in the process of being relisted as we speak about this, like people are working on it. Idaho, state of Idaho is working with. I think US Fish and Wildlife Service to get it de-listed from.
Same with the caribou in Idaho.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah.
So I may need to make a note here or explain more about caribou and Canada lynx that they're in the process of being de-listed.
Maybe it would be better to put that paragraph, that last paragraph off and say.
Okay.
And then, um, species, species noted below. Back to what Al was saying, I mean, it's really these, these three only that are. Of interest to Bonner County, that should be at the beginning of this section.
Got it.
To answer your question on DPS, it looks like it's referring to a distinct population segment.
Oh. Hmm.
Right.
Yeah, it does make sense for that, in that context.
White sturgeon.
Okay, so critical habitat and land development?
Critical habitat, again, this is all taken from the US Fish and Wildlife Service because they only have the ability to designate areas as critical wildlife habitats. So it explains what a critical wildlife habitat is, who designates it. And they have this information for private landowners on their website, which basically says it doesn't affect land ownership. It allows, it does not allow the government to take or manage private property. It does not establish a refuge, reserve, preserve or other conservation area, and it does not allow. Government or public to access private land. This is all from their, directly from their website, which I think is important to understand.
Yeah, it does not affect land ownership, allow government or management. Allow government public access, not affect activities.
Because I think for a long time, critical wildlife habitat has been understood to mean that if there is, there is critical wildlife habitat on a property, it means. No development can happen there, which is not the case. Then, again, this is taken from critical habitat and how it relates to land development. Again, it's taken from the US Fish and Wildlife Service and their website. Critical habitat exclusions, uh, it explains how. There are sometimes, US Fish and Wildlife doesn't designate an area. There are sometimes, US Fish and Wildlife doesn't designate an area as critical wildlife habitat because the, um, reason to exclude an area from critical habitat designation is, is more beneficial than including it in the... In this designation.
Huh?
Then there's just one sentence about critical habitats in Bonner County, which is basically a critical habitat for bull trout, there are no other critical habitats in Bonner County.
Why do we have all this stuff in red?
This is, this was in the old component, and which I just wanted to leave for you guys to review and make sure that we are okay deleting this.
Oh, I think it should be eliminated.
Yes, it's, it's very, very inaccurate.
It causes, it's gonna cause confusion.
It is extremely incorrect, and, yes, it has caused a lot of confusion.
I'll take it out.
So, I just left it for you to review.
Okay. Thanks.
So, section 4.3 mitigation provisions and recommended measures. For this section, all we had was recommended mitigation measures for Bonner County. But, I found this on US Fish and Wildlife Service website, where there are critical wildlife habitats, there is an option to get, um, ESA section seven consultation, which basically means federal agencies can, um, if federal agencies are permitting some sort of an activity on private lands, and it's going to affect critical wildlife in some way, they can apply for a biological opinion from US Fish and Wildlife Service, and they can tell you whether it's going to...
That's only if there's a federal nexus.
Right, only if there is a federal nexus.
That's, I don't...
But there have been projects in Bonner County where there has been a federal nexus.
Public projects, yeah.
Not just public projects, even private, private projects, there have been nexus there.
Oh, because of 404 and stuff?
No, well, yes, that too, and, um...
Certain creek over by Hope?
Yeah.
Private development, oh yeah.
So, private projects are going to be affected by...
Well, true, but...
Because there was permitting there, right?
Yeah, because there's a federal nexus, some federal agency has to permit it, so they can, they can push it into section seven consultation, US Fish and Wildlife. Um, that's a standard practice on every federal project. I don't know why we have to cover it so extensively here, all...
Four paragraphs.
For the absence, for the absence of confusion.
For the absence. Primarily, yes, for the absence.
That's what I would say.
Because, time and, time and again, we have heard from the community that, you know, if there is critical wildlife habitat somewhere, no development can happen there, and we should prohibit a development, which is not the aim of this, of designating an area as critical wildlife habitat. So, it, it gives some information as to how to progress in those areas, if you have to permit land development in those areas.
But I, I just wonder, because, maybe it's a different way of stating it, stronger, that there has to be a federal nexus, some federal agency says, uh, the, 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 the consultation directs all federal agencies to work, so forth, but some, some person who's really concerned about something will say, "Well, I want to have a section seven, I demand a section seven ESA consultation with US Fish and Wildlife Service."
They don't have to do it.
And there's no federal nexus, then US Fish is gonna say, "Forget it, no, I'm sorry, no, we're not gonna waste our time doing that."
Okay.
It's not a, it's not a local option kind of...
Oh, it's, it's... Find pretty clearly up in the section of, few paragraphs above, critical habitat and land development. It's mostly an italics paragraph. The only activities that involve, only activities that involve a federal permit, license, or funding, and are likely to destroy or adversely modify critical habitat will be affected.
Okay, but there's no connection, that paragraph to the section seven consultation, which you jump on and say, "Oh, that's what we want, we want to see more of that." People are saying, we hear it all the time, "Why wasn't there an environmental impact statement written on this project?" Because it's a federal nexus requirement.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll connect those.
Yeah, we need to connect.
Just somehow to, okay, correlate the two. You know, maybe even, oh, maybe even mentioning under critical habitat, the seven section consultation up there under that paragraph. Much abbreviated version of section seven consultation.
Yeah, that actually does make sense.
Just don't want, again, all the way through, try not to, not to put a bunch of fish hooks out there that people could grab hold of inappropriately, but we have that, because definitely appropriate types of orders.
Well, moving this paragraph, 4.3 up, do you include all paragraph 4.3? Including the recommended mitigation measures for Bonner County?
Or just the ESA section seven consultation? Just that?
Yeah, under, under section three, or four point...
I can just move ESA section seven consultation in the critical wildlife habitat.
Okay, that's another part of, yes.
Okay. And so you're gonna move, move all 4.3?
No, not, not all of 4.3, just that, just that, just the ESA section seven part.
Well, isn't the, uh, mitigation measures, isn't that related to...
Oh, it says after, apart from, see, so that, get rid of that sentence, really, to say, here are mitigation measures for, uh...
Critical wildlife.
Effects, effects on critical habitat in Bonner County.
Yeah. And to see if we have...
Are we recommending that, or is it...
Well, that, that's to start the conversation. But cluster buildings, maintain buffers.
See, currently, we have a 75-foot setback, let's say, from Trust Creek Bull Trout area.
Right.
They suggest 50 feet.
Yeah, why would we have 50 feet? I thought it was 75 feet from these streams.
Me, Bonner County says 75 feet.
Yeah.
US Fish and Wildlife says 50.
Oh, wait a minute. Well, whose, whose recommendations are with these?
Yeah, yeah, I was gonna say, where did these recommendations come from?
It doesn't say.
They came from the prior component? Yeah, so, so we don't know where they came from.
Oh, okay. Alrighty. Just like that, they're eliminated.
Wow, look at that, just as we're talking about it. Was that you who was crossing out?
Swatty's on this one.
She's so quick.
She's very good.
Fingers, fingers are funny. So...
So, what, um, so I guess, to me...
Yeah.
Well, to me, uh, unless we, unless these are our recommendations, we, they shouldn't be here.
Right, I agree.
And... Do you want to give them, or do you want them?
Okay, so...
We, we talked about some of these in waters, water resources, right?
Well, I don't see that, this one. Well, okay. Clustering, clustering development, that's...
It's everywhere.
Oh, this is...
Clustering development.
Maintain buffers, natural vegetation.
That information had to come from somebody.
Pretty general.
Looks like it came off the size of the...
Well, well, for, for sure, we should, we need to change the 50 feet to 75.
75.
And, and...
Shouldn't make, I mean, shouldn't have an ambiguity between what we're now requiring, what we're recommending.
75 feet coming directly out of the Forest Practices Act.
I know it's Forest Practice. And the county adopted it usually.
Yeah, that Forest Manager Practice Act, that's only for commercial logging.
I know, but it was a standard, and they picked on that standard, just because it does... Developing, you're using land, modifying land, so stay away from the creek.
I thought that was for residential too.
Well, it is. It is, that's what I'm saying, they borrowed it out of the Forest Practices Act and just took it. Not specifically.
Okay, well, I just think, we need to be consistent.
We can even remove 50 or 75, we don't have to say anything here because...
Yeah, just say, follow, maintain the buffers.
Let's just talk about the principle and not the specific dimensions.
That'll bring me to my next point. Header on this says recommended mitigation measures. So, whether they're just here in this paragraph, or they're gonna end up here in the, in the objectives and policies under this component, there's still, it's a recommendation of the conplan that's gonna find its way into code. I'm talking about the format of, should all the way through the conplan, should we have this kind of summary statement under chapters or whole components, recommendations? Or, just say, here's policy. I don't know if we can do it as a policy for the fact that up above it says, unless there's a federal nexus, it does not affect private...
No, that's, that's only if it ends up out of section seven consultation. Just in general.
If it doesn't mean that Bonner County can...
Right. Well... This, this bulleted list, you can find very similar lists in all kinds of smart growth policies and ESA policies, and it, it, it's a very common list. The folks who came in and talked to us about global warming and climate change, they've got a similar list.
The last two points, though, are very... I...
Yeah, they're not there. That sounds like the initial.
I don't know if we can tell people to keep their animals inside?
No, no, no.
Or even educate landowners, it's not a land use function.
No, we've got some other ones that are similar to that in other, other components.
You know, why don't we take this section out? For, for a variety of reasons, one is consistency, like Don was talking about. I think also, there's some of these things that I don't think we would recommend. We put something in there that says encourage pets to be kettled, leased, kept indoors, advised restraint.
Definitely should come out, that, maintain...
70%.
We had that in here, we'd get strung up.
Well, the rest of them, maintain a 70% canopy in forested sites.
Like I said, it sounds like it's coming out of a list, out of a list of EMPs or logging operators.
Oh, and part of it is, but even then, no, that's not, I don't know where that came from.
Let's, let's take this out. Is that even consistent with, with wildfire safety? With 70% coverage, I have to think about that, I doubt it.
I don't know, but still, maintain 70% cover, you've got a forest manager plan, plan says in 20 years, I'm gonna clear cut my property and start over, oops.
Yeah. Well, not like that, but you also recover the opening of year 20?
And, yeah, we can't, we can't really, this, this is all came from.
But the only thing we can do is educate landowners.
We do have some of those in other components.
We do.
So, we're eliminating the entire section, right?
So, section 4.3 just goes away?
Well...
Yeah, all of 4.3 go away.
Okay.
What, you moved it?
Because we already moved, already took out 4.2.
And all that's left is this bullet list, so...
Part of it, uh, we're eliminating the others, so...
Left a skeleton.
Toasted.
Alright, so, um, we've done, we've, we've done one, chapters one, two, and five previously. So, all we're doing now is we're gonna wait for, um, Swatty to have enough time to do 3.6.
Yes.
And then we will be done with natural resources, except for the... What do you think, Swatty, are, are we gonna have 3.6 by next time?
Yes.
So, can we set this for public comment?
We can. We can.
Alright, so we'll set that for a public comment workshop for next time? That half of a good job.
Woohoo!
And, um, okay, so, what's on, on the agenda also is land use. And I don't think we need to go...
What time is it?
We've been sitting here for quite a while.
Yep.
Yeah, I got it down to 80, I thought.
Well, I would like to know, though, I, just some general questions I have about land use, land use section. We need the gap analysis, all that stuff?
No.
Why do we, why is that?
That's not even the consistency. Check the U of I, I can't find it anywhere on their website.
Okay, so we can eliminate all the gap, all the gap analysis stuff?
Don, gap analysis is archaic.
It's just, I, it's probably still, I can't, you and I came up with it, or they, they got into a national thing, and they did an Idaho version, but I cannot find any current thing on your website, on U of I's website. As I read it, when I read it, my, my understanding is that they did this, um, gap analysis to see, to determine whether or not they had protected certain...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Can I? Alright, so, is there anything else that we can sort of off the bat eliminate out of the land use? Well, I don't know, it's hard to, I don't, I didn't see any other help chapters, as they're called, that were in the chopping block.
You might want to remove the category chapter two?
Like gap analysis?
Yes.
Are we, are we in land use?
Mm-hmm.
I'm sorry.
We are land use.
Land cover and all that. Well, I think, no, that's part of, land, the land cover...
Obedience.
See, that's part of the 6508 requirement. Land... What does it say?
This component includes an, oh, that's, that's what...
This is right here.
Okay, an analysis of natural land types, existing land covers and uses, and the intrinsic suitability of lands for uses such as agriculture, forestry, mineral exploration, extraction, preservation, recreation, housing, commerce, and industry facilities. And we're supposed to put it on a map. It's kind of a, so, my, my virtue of those, that list really links back to the other components.
Correct.
Quite a bit.
Right.
So, I just, I forgot to bring it up, when we had that, uh, natural resources opening, in the tables, table three showed the percentages of land use. It was in natural resources.
The, the percentages of land use?
Well, I think, you know, so, yeah, but, so that, that might do it, just add... Analysis of those.
Well, I, I don't wanna get it, I mean, we've been going pretty long, so, what I would also encourage everybody to do is, I, I, maybe it was just me, but I, the way, these, these figures, these maps, I, I didn't understand them. Uh, to me.
We should definitely eliminate Bonner County parcel density map.
Yeah.
Yeah, I... There were some others in here too. Chapter four, existing land density, that's a bad term. Land use array, something, I don't know, land use density is land density, doesn't mean land use density. Each one of these deserves some discussion and...
Yeah, okay, so, um, at least it's be, yeah, as you, as, as Dave said, I mean, or Don said, each of these components, to some extent, are, are, are in here again.
And it was nice that the existing one does, it talks about, here's recreation, here's, here's housing, here's, here's commerce and industry, public facilities, that's great.
I wonder why they, why they changed the names, like commerce is, we should be economic development.
Economic development, who knows? SG. But that's, I think that's our, our aim, is to, certain of the components really have very little to do with land use regulation, which is required by code, so we include it. Ones that do, that says something towards land use regulation, in terms of services, or what can be provided, or whatever, those should be summarized... in terms of services or what can be provided or whatever, those should be summarized or reiterated to whatever extent, not the whole component in this, but summary statements from that, and therefore then that's the basis of that state. Therefore, taking all this into account, this land use designation is this, here's where it matters. Couldn't that be the goal?
So. Oh, yeah.
It is, it is, but all the, all the first five chapters have to set it up, therefore, it's therefore.
It's on chapter six though, that, that's, that's actually, I had another question, so I think we went to great detail in 1978, comprehensive plan and all that stuff, I don't think we needed.
It was interesting when they did it there because it was such a drastic change. But I, I don't know that we have to reiterate history again to justify this change 40 years on. We could just say, it's been 20 years since, whatever the date is, since 2005. And therefore, this is more than something else, you have to see. The other part is, got to keep in mind, this is supposed to be a forward-looking document. So that's where it's critical, that thing I suggested last time, this analysis to see what the holding capacity or so forth, what the service capacity is, if designations are made and areas have this designation, what's it gonna say, what's the pressures gonna come about if that is 10, 15, 20, 30, 50, 75% completed in that zone? Yeah, I just can't get away from that, I'm stuck on it. I don't know that it's achievable to do that, I think it is GIS wise and a whole raft of assumptions. But I think that is gonna help justify a certain designation in a certain area that that designation holds.
All right, so we're, we're gonna deal with that, Don, and we'll, we'll straighten out. But right now, I think what we need to do is we need to put land use on there for a commission or workshop. Need to put public services back for public comment. And natural resources public comment. And what do we need to do, Jake, with vacation rules?
So like I said, it's kind of the homework I gave you guys to send me some justification for it, given the goals and objectives of the con plan, but staff will.
So then we should put that on.
If you guys wanna go over that as a group, you can go over it before we put the application in, otherwise I can put the application in with that information.
Why don't you do that, why don't we do this, why don't we give you our ideas? And then you draft something.
Yeah, that's what I was planning on doing, is gathering your ideas, I was gonna lump them all together.
And synthesize them.
Exactly, and then put it into an application and start processing the next amendment.
But does November look like, do we have two meetings in longer or just one?
When can we ever decide on the?
The first one's the seventh.
Mr. Chairman, what was the consensus, consensus of, are we leaving Panhandle Health on the end game or right up front? I can't remember.
Right up front?
We are, now we change, we back up front.
So what was the question?
I didn't know, we're gonna consult with them that applicant, applicant has to supply their subject permit for the house?
No, we didn't go that way.
We didn't go that way?
No.
Okay, so we're leaving them at the end?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so the next meeting, we could have another meeting in October.
One, two, not scheduled. We have right now the seventh and the 21st, the 21st is the week of Thanksgiving. Do you anyone plan on being out, are we gonna have a form?
I think I might be out.
We could have an extra one this, this month.
Yeah, I would prefer to have an extra one this month.
Skip that one.
Skip that one.
Be two weeks around, it'd be the 31st and then the 7th.
Oh, well.
Up to you guys.
So we, you know, we could make it to 14.
Well, we could make it 14.
I'd rather go with the 31st.
Well, the 31st is Halloween.
Right. Does anybody have any big party plans?
I'd rather be here.
Yeah.
Little kids that they need to take trick or treating.
My grandkids.
I don't think we can.
We don't have any kids in our neighborhood, so the adults are gonna get together and scare each other.
Unless Debbie comes by.
Our neighbors are David.
Unless you come by for candor.
We wander through the woods with.
I don't have to dress up or wait till Halloween to do that.
So we're gonna get notified when our next meeting?
So what are we doing?
Yeah.
All right, so the next meeting will be November 7th. And it'll be 800 Highway 2, 4:30.
You guys wanna meet the 7th and the 14th? That's where.
Oh, wait, no, so the 31st.
You wanna see a calendar, you want a calendar?
Rather than the 14th?
No, I'm not gonna be here the 14th. Oh, the 7th and the 14th?
Yeah.
Rather than 30. All right, well, if you wanna do it 7th and 14th, we can do that.
The only, I mean, the only thing, the 7th is election day, right?
Oh, right, the building will be busy, but we'll be.
But we can still meet up here.
We should standpoint though, right?
Oh, I mean, county elections runs it all, so there'll be people in and out of the building down that way.
So.
So we'll have to meet up here.
Do you have enough time?
You don't like this?
So all of our, the only thing that requires public noticing is our hearings and then.
So do we have anything like that?
Need to take the keys.
We don't have any, the next hearing items are gonna be the vacation rental ordinance change and then the public services. Which we haven't financed yet, exactly. So vacation rental will probably be.
I think we may get rational resources.
Right, so those will be, I think by the end of the year, we'll be doing hearings on those.
The 7th, 14th.
That works. The only, the only component we have left is land use. Oh, I mean, we gotta clean up this other two, but yeah. I mean.
To, to, all the two we haven't done.
Correct. I think, yeah, I think that. Yeah. All right, so we're gonna stand adjourned until November 7th. This building, 4:30.
By the way.
In this room.
In this room.
On the third floor.
Here's the, here's the state code that talks about districts and what they are.
Commissioner brought this chair out.